Okay, it's five o'clock and we're going to get started.
I'm coming, Mary.
Thank you. So today is the 22nd day of April and we have our regular town council meeting. I will offer the prayer. Dear Father in heaven, we come before thee at this time in thanksgiving for this wonderful town that we live in, for the peace and quiet that is there for us to enjoy. We pray a blessing on our citizens and for their well-being and to be a world-class council to make voice decisions. On this we pray, in Jesus' name, amen. All right, we need to adopt the agenda. Councilor, do you want to make an addition to this agenda?
We just wanted to talk about the upcoming Health Advisory Council and just kind of discuss some options for that.
So if you want to put it under requestful decision, maybe seven G?
That would be fine.
Okay. We need to remove a delegation, the 6:00 PM delegation. The Alzheimer Society will not be there. We will discuss the item, but we will not have a delegation. So please remove that for see all of the agenda. We will discuss that we could remove that item there and put it under seventh H. Alzheimer. Okay. So with those changes, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do you have that, Councilor?
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the...
Approve the amendment as passed.
...admitted by Councilor Ben Gray with the changes. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we have a delegation and we would ask all three gentlemen, Bart Atwood, Adam Brown, and Curtis Kerr, to come forward. We have a presentation to make to those gentlemen and we will ask Marion to come also. Thank you. It's my privilege to do that once a while. Please come over here. For chair. Okay. These gentlemen need to be recognized along with Marion for wonderful work that they did when there were the flood. Marion was named a hero of the flood for her work in the town of Nanton and providing support to that town during the flood. And Curtis and Bart and Don were recognized by the town, town and council for their great work and support for the town of...
Turner Valley.
Turner Valley and Diamond, Black Diamond. Thank you. And so it says, "For exemplary service and contribution to the 2013 flood, rebuilding efforts of the communities of Turner Valley and Black Diamond." So Curtis, thank you very much. And Don, thank you so much. They came with the same expectation and we very much appreciate all what you did and your expertise. And Bart, thank you so much for all that support. You met your man and you guys did a great job. And Marion, you are also very special. She allowed you guys to go and we allowed them to go. And thank you so much for having such a big crowd. There were really a lot of long, long days.
It was fun. It was a lot of fun. Good experience.
What did you take out of that experience?
Well, a different operation gives you a really good insight into your own operation, ways to improve, and just a confidence builder saying, hey, we're doing all right. It's good to be able to see a new process and learn more.
Thank you so much. It's great. Thank you. And the gentlemen, if you have to go, please go ahead. We now have our delegation from YPM, which is our audit firm. And so Doug Mondell, if you'd like to come forward and help us through the process of your audit. I know you already had a long meeting with the Town Audit Committee and I know you're going to give us a short version of that report.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, we have here an overhead we're going to put on just to run through the financial statements very quickly. As you mentioned, I spent about an hour and a half with the Audit Committee, which is Councilor Edmonds, Councilor Pivoy, and Councilor Ben Gray, as well as the administration, last week reviewing the financial statements. And at the end of this brief presentation, I'm hoping one of them will make a motion to accept the audited financial statements presented. So I believe the councilors have the financial statements which are in draft form. And the reason they're in draft form is because until they are formally approved, we cannot sign our audit report. Management in the form of Mrs. Carlson has signed off that she accepts responsibility for the financial statements. So the only thing left is to review your approval.
I'll do this. Another one.
I'm just asking Mrs. Carlson if she could get there. I hope you can see that. Oh, yeah, not that one. That's the management letter. That's an internal one. Oh, that's the post-audit letter. There we are. Page one, please. Thank you. And this is the report I referred to that we will sign and hand to me once the statements are approved. This is the reason I am here and our firm is engaged. And according to Municipal Affairs Regulations, you are required to have an independent third-party audit of your financial statements. This report is addressed to the mayor and members of council. And basically, it gets longer every year, so I'm going to paraphrase it. The first paragraph is what we are doing, what we have audited. We've audited the financial statements and all the notes. Second paragraph talks about management's responsibility. That's your administration and ultimately the town council. They're responsible for the preparation of fair presentation. The next two paragraphs detail our responsibility, our audit. We conduct our audit according to Canadian audit standards. Tells us we have to do certain things. And the next paragraph basically said what those things include. Procedures to obtain evidence, et cetera, and all the other things we do. And then finally, we render our opinion on the financial statements. And our opinion is these statements present fairly in all material, respects the financial position of the town and the results of its operations. That is what is called clean audit opinion. Page two, please. Page two, I talked about briefly. This is signed by your chief administrative officer, taking responsibility of the management of the town of Carson for the financial statements. It just basically said that you maintain internal accounting and administrative controls, which we check. The elected council is responsible for ensuring that management fulfills its duty. And we inform them and meet with the audit committee to ensure that things are being performed on the correct basis. The elected council is responsible... And again, that's the audit committee. Council meets annually with management and the external auditors, which we did last week. And the statements have been audited by YPM and we have had, on behalf of the residents and ratepayers, and we've had full and complete access to council. The next, page three, please. Very briefly, this is the statement of financial position of the town of Carson at the end of December 2013. Breaks down the assets of the town into two distinct forms. One are financial assets, which you're applying as those that can be turned into cash. So at the top there, we have financial assets comprised of cash, taxes, and grants receivable, trade receivables, land held for resale, notes receivable, and investments, totaling $3.7 million. That's slightly down from the prior year of $3.9. But from that, we deduct all the liabilities of the municipality. And those include accounts payable, employee benefit obligations, that's things like vacation time, deferred revenue. Deferred revenue is grants we get from the provincial federal governments for capital and other projects, but we haven't spent them. So they're in effect restricted. They're not building yet ours. We can only bring them into revenue as we make the required expenditures. So that means we've got $1 million of unspent government funds. And that could be things like you got a grant to repair hail damage, but it's not all spent by the end of the year, go in there. But we have the money and collecting interest. Long-term debt, that's a debenture debt of the town of Carson. There is no additional debt issued in 2013. As you can see, the overall debt decreased by some $213,000 during the year. Now, and that long-term debt figure includes every piece of debt and every payment. Now, that's like saying my current net worth is really low because my entire mortgage is a debt. Well, when I look at my current position, I'm not going to pay my mortgage entirely off next year. The portion of that debt that's not due till after 2018, which is five years, okay, is a half a million dollars. So if you take that half a million dollars out of those liabilities and say, well, just put five years' worth in there, that increases our net financial assets to somewhere close to $1.3 million, up from $790,000. So this is showing us our worst-case scenario. If we had to pay every single cent we owed tomorrow, it would still be $790,000 to have it in the game. Now, the federal and provincial governments use the same format. They just have big credits or negatives when they get it. It's called net debt, when they take off all their debt. Then we have the other kind of assets, non-financial. Those are ones that we can't turn into cash right away. Prepaid expenses, that's things like computer service contracts, insurance. Can't turn that in. Inventory for consumption. Excuse me. That's things like your electrical and public works inventory. And then, of course, tangible capital assets, $44 million. And when we total all of those together, we come up to our accumulated surplus of $46,250,000, which is up just about $1 million over 2012. Page four, please. Excuse me again. This is simply the revenue and expenses of the town of Carson with the budgeted figures from the budget that's passed by this council on the left there, so you can compare budgeted to actual results. We had budgeted revenues. Budgeted revenues were $8.9 million. They came in slightly less at $8.6. Now, the big reason for that drop is line three. You'll note our taxes were pretty well bang-on. Our user fees were slightly less, but government transfers were operating. On the expense side, and on a lot of revenues, you tend to be conservative because that's one number that really is against you. The other areas were over budget. Investment income, the investments did well. penalties and costs of taxes were more. But I will say that overall tax, unpaid taxes at the end decreased considerably over 2012, which is a very positive thing. Licenses and permits were above. Gain on disposal of capital assets, that's just ones we trade in. Franchise and concession, pretty close. And then donations. Now, donations include gifts of property of kind from people building things and giving them to the town. It's not just cash donations. But then when we look at our expenses, we budgeted $9.6 million, we came in at $9.2. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean we spent a lot less money, but the town of Carson does a considerable amount of contract work for other municipalities. They use their own equipment for building assets for which they receive government grants. And machine time and labor is credited to these expenses, which is why in a lot of cases, less is spent than is with budget. So at the end of the day, budgeted $9.6, came in at $9.2. And so that's about $400,000 under budget. The town budgeted for a deficiency of revenue over expenses before capital and other of $787,000. Actually, came in at $582,000, you're $200,000 different. Then we have other income. Government transfers for capital and contributed assets. Now, that contributed assets there, that second line that says $38,000, is considerably under budget. That was assets that were to be contributed by Carson County, but wasn't picked up by the end of the year. That was shown in this year. And as I mentioned earlier, when we look at government transfers for capital, I mentioned earlier, unexpended funds or deferred revenue. If you budget a $1 million grant to build a new swimming pool and you get the $1 million grant, of course, your budget shows you budgeted $1 million. But because we can only recognize it as revenue when we spend it, if you don't do the project in that year, you only have $50,000 worth of revenue because that's all you spent because you have to match it. You're going to show a $1 million budget and you're only going to show $50,000 revenue, even though you actually got the $1 million and put it in the bank. And that's a confusing thing, but that's the way, you have to do it this way. So the fact you got more grants doesn't mean you have more than you budgeted. Just means you spent more this year than much budgeted to take in. You already had the other money. But at the end of the day, the town had budgeted a surplus and overall excess of revenue over expenses of $642,000 and then came in at $988,000. Could I get you to go to page 21, please? I'm going to be brief. There's about 20 pages of notes in between that I'm not going to do all. As I indicated, the audit committee got to deal with those.
They were thrilling. Thank you.
Somebody else shares my opinion.
The note is the best part of the whole document.
I'm sure. Well, we can go back and go through them if you like. Okay, this is an important statement because this shows how the town of Carson actually did for the year. Now, because these statements are so difficult to understand because of the new format, and I'm sure the federal government had nothing to do with that. I like to look at this the way I would look at my own situation or anybody I know. I have three kinds of accounts. I have my checking account or my unrestricted bank account, which is the town of Carson's unrestricted surplus. I have my internally restricted, which are the reserves, which are monies, unspent monies that don't come from sources like government that you've put away into reserves to fund future expenses. In other words, if we sell a piece of land, we may put some of that money aside to ensure we have enough for infrastructure. They're set away either by legislation or at council's discretion to fund future expenses. So I look at that one, if I'm looking at it from mine, as my going to Mexico or going on vacation bank account because I put money aside for something or to buy a new car versus unrestricted, which I can use for anything. And then we also have our equity in tangible capital assets. Now, for the town, that's the total undepreciated value of your total infrastructure, vehicles, et cetera, less any debt, okay, equals, just like a homeowner, the value of my car, my snowmobile, and my house, less my mortgage, is my equity. So just like an individual, the town has three pools. So when we look at the changes, okay, we have an excess of revenue over expenses in our unrestricted, I mentioned, $986,000, so that goes in. But council transferred $672,000 to internally restricted reserves to fund future expenses. They used $155,000 out of that account to fund operating expenses this year. So translated, that means the town put money aside into the reserves last year for money they didn't spend on budgeted things. You might have budgeted by $100,000 worth of gravel. Didn't do it, put it into reserves. This year, you bought the gravel, so you pulled it out and funded it with that, okay? Current year funds used for tangible capital assets, $2,157,000. So that's just like a homeowner. If you write a check to buy a new car, your bank account goes down, but on the other side of that, your equity in your assets goes up. Contributed capital assets, the same thing. It goes up. It shows as part of our $900,000, so it has to come out. Disposal, if we sell an old snow blower, our equity in our assets goes down, but our bank account goes up. The amortization expense, your house is wearing out, but that doesn't cost us cash, so that increases our equity, our unrestricted, and decreases the value of all our assets. Capital lease obligation, that's a fancy word for you're buying a photocopier on a lease. And then you have capital with the ventures repaid. And like any homeowner, if you have a mortgage, money comes out of your bank and increases the equity you have in your assets. So at the end of the day, we started with $522,000 unrestricted, ended the day with $643,000. So we're up about $122,000. Our reserves started at $1,969,000 and ended at $1,910,000. Okay, so we're down about $58,000. But overall, I mentioned, we're still up between $122,000, so our two bank accounts are still ahead of last year. And our equity has gone up almost $1 million from the prior year. So if you look at the far-right columns, at the end of the day, the investments that we have in our two restricted and unrestricted surpluses and the equity in the tangible capital assets of the town of Carson has improved by just about $1 million to $46,250. So people say, how do we really do? Our overall position increased $1 million and our current, if you will, our codicide... So that, and you were under budget on your expenses, which allowed you to be over budget on your bottom line. And the final page I'd like to draw to your attention is the very last page, or second, very last page, page 23. Okay, which is really difficult to see. So, but what this is, okay, what this particular schedule is, is called a schedule of segmented disclosure. Okay, thank you so much. And what this does is it breaks your revenues and expenses down into the various functions. On the left, we have general government. Then we have protective services, transportation, environmental, public health, planning and development, recreation and culture, and electrical. So if we look at this general, which includes like all your taxes and user fees and things like that, excluding electrical, we generated $3.9 of revenue. The expenditures, administration, contracted goods, all those things, we ended up with $2.7 million to help cover the expense areas and other places. Protective services, okay, fire, leasing, things like that. $217,000 net cost. Transportation, that's your roads, streets. $1.1 million net cost to the town of Carson that has to be subsidized by taxes, et cetera. Environmental services, $582,000, that's garbage and things like that. Goes to help support other areas. Public health, cost $82,000. Planning and development this year cost $400,000. And then there's the big one. Next, roads, recreation and culture. Residents and ratepayers of the community demand, if I can use that word, top-class recreational facilities, and they cost. Especially when you're dealing in smaller rural towns, that's your cost. People demand those services and they say, why are my taxes so high? Because you have to have roads and if you want any culture and recreation, you need to pay for it. And unfortunately, the town of Carson is very lucky because one more column over, your electrical utility generated $500,000 worth of revenue, which more than 50% sets off the entire cost of recreation and culture in the town of Carson. So that just gives you an idea, ladies and gentlemen, of how, you know, where the money goes. Because nobody, when you start to look at a why are taxes, and as I said, your audit committee, anytime you don't have a substantial, and I mean substantial, commercial tax base, you're going to end up subsidizing your recreation and culture. That's my report. I've been brief, but if you have any questions, I'm sure your audit committee would be happy to answer them.
Doug, I really want to thank you very much for this and I really want to thank administration and Noel in particular for having put all the paperwork together and keeping track of all revenues and expenses and projects and whatever that is. So I'm really thankful that you are able to tell us that the town is doing well and that indeed we have, as a council, tried hard to keep the taxes at a reasonable level through managing our budget. So thank you. Councilor Ben Gray?
Madam Mary, you ready for a motion?
Yes.
As a member of the Audit Committee, I make a motion that we accept the audited financial statement with all inclusive statements, letters, and notes as presented by Mr. Doug Mondell of Young Park in McNabb.
For the 2013...
2015 budget.
Audit. For the 2013 audit.
Audit.
Okay. All in favor? I believe this...
And my last duty is to get two councilors to sign this.
Maybe the councilors that are on the committee could do that.
And if I might be permitted, I would like to thank Marion and Noel as well. You're really good to my people. Make our job a lot easier. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. As you saw in the presentation, there is some money that has been reserved and we need to approve the reserve as of December 31, 2013. Councilor Pivoy makes that motion. Any questions regarding that? No? Okay, so seeing none, we will approve that reserve. All in favor? Thank you. And you can see we have a fairly healthy reserve at this point. Thank you. Noel, you on your way. All the best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Noel is going to enjoy the graduation of our daughter.
Good.
All right. We will now pass to item five, the adoption of minutes. There is a change that needs to be made that I brought to the attention of Marion. If you look on the Juno Beach Center Association, there is a typo.
Just a little grammar switch.
And it's the sentence that say, "Council decided that council member could..."
Donate to the campaign.
"...donate individually." It has to be changed. "Could donate to the campaign individually." Okay? So that is a change that will be made. So I need a motion to approve the minute.
As amended.
Maybe Councilor Spockus? As amended, would you...
As amended, yep.
Pass the motion?
Move to accept the minutes as amended.
Of April 8, 2014, as amended. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. All right, we're going to go to item number six, business arising, Mormon Trail Initiative Committee appointment. As you know, that committee is now formed, the terms of reference have been established. We need a counselor or someone at this table to sit on that committee that will deal, that will meet at least full-time per year and more if necessary. I know you are all carrying quite a load at this point, and my question is as follow. Counselor Barfus, it is in your department, because it is a tourism kind of initiative. I do not know that at this time you are able to add more to your load.
Thank you.
And I think it's getting a little bit much. So here is my proposal. Someone on this table could sit there, or, and I could be the substitute, the ex-official, or I'll sit on that committee and be glad to do so.
I'll be more happy to sit on that committee since we've dropped load committee.
Okay. So Counselor Benry would like to take care of that, and Counselor Benry, if there are times where you cannot be there, let me know, and I'll be glad to help you with that.
Thank you.
So your first meeting is on April twenty-ninth, is in McGrath, at the McGrath Town Center at five P. M.
I have some information now forward to you via email.
Thank you.
It's the agenda and all the background information.
Okay. Counselor, if you don't mind, I know you detest writing reports, but can we expect some kind of report regarding this one?
Hey, you got my two reports!
I'm glad, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could it be possible to have a synopsis of your meeting?
You bet.
Thank you. And we need a motion to approve that appointment.
I will move that we appoint Counselor Benry to the committee for the Mormon Trail Initiative Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, for accepting that.
Thank you, Counselor Benry.
Yeah. Okay. The second item under six is six B. Has to do with municipal census. The reason why this is on a table, as you know, all the grants that we receive, many of them, I would say, if not all of them, are given in function of the population in your town. So it's always to our best interest to know if we have increased population to try to go after more money. The problem in our town, as you know, although we have Lee Crest that has increased by ninety-four people since two thousand twelve, we also know that the town population of students has decreased. We also know that we do not have new subdivision that would give us a true sense of growth. And we also know that Lee Crest, also there are ninety-four new patients, half of that population at least comes from transfer from within the town. So it's, there is some growth, but we cannot be a hundred percent sure that it is true growth. Therefore, the recommendation will be for this year to not enter into a municipal census because of the cost associated with that. We need to be a hundred percent sure that forty extra souls have come to our town above and beyond what we have today to break even recouping the cost of a census. That's the problem. Counselor Benry?
Madam Mayor, I think I was the one that best sparked that idea of a census, and we give administration some direction to give us some kind of a lead on it, and this is what we found.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to verify, when you said students, you mean the woman in West Wind is down? Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Town of Carstens.
Yeah.
Town of Carstens.
Yeah, so from the West Wind Division, that's where we got the information for down.
Do we know, like, how far down? Like, is it a number thirty or fifty?
I think it's in the background, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's a hundred and ten students, yeah, since two thousand and eleven.
Gotcha.
So although we may have new families that have moved in, we have a lot of students eighteen and above that live at the town.
And we've had a number of students move out, too.
Yeah. So right now, it's maybe not to our best interest to do that, but we will keep it on the radar, because it's important for us to see if we are increasing. So there is for administration, we will not carry on a municipal census. That's enough of our recommendation, Marion? Thank you. All right. Now we will deal with seven requestful decisions, and I note that Rosemary Daly is here to see a little bit what would happen with the item that we have on the agenda. As you read in your background, Rosemary was in a hospital when a power bump happened in that part of town. And what happened there is she suffered losses in her home because of the increase of power at a certain point. Now, you have some background, that power bump was due to a windstorm that affected the whole area. Unfortunately, it is the house of Rosemary that suffered the damages. Since then, I note that Rosemary has power surge everywhere in her home in order to deal with such thing. So here is the difficulty that we are faced with, or the issue we are faced with. The cause of the problem was a windstorm, which you could classify as act of God. It affected Rosemary's house in particular, and didn't seem to affect people around the area, for whatever reason. So the question is for council to decide, after you read the background from the electrician that tested the area and couldn't find nothing wrong with the system, is the town's responsibility regarding the issue? So it's up to you, council. Counselor Pivoy.
So, and maybe this question more for administration, is this something that we are covered for through insurance?
Well, not necessarily covered for. In these instances, we would send it to our insurance, and the insurance company would determine whether we were at fault. We would have covered if there was some fault that we had had within our system. In this case, though, our deductible is twenty-five hundred dollars. My interpretation of the claim and the information that's there is that the claim would be denied. Therefore, we didn't send it to the insurance company, because there's a cost associated with that, no matter when we send that, they'd have adjusted costs and those kind of things. So we try to minimize those expenses as much as we can.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Creed?
Having worked in maintenance, I didn't gather in here from the windstorm, I, I'm not sure, I didn't see anything in the background indicating a windstorm, maybe I missed it, I don't know, since I have trouble with that.
It was a December, if I might, it's in the report from the electricians, that day they'd been called to a location south of town because of the wind.
Okay, so it was, it was, okay, I guess the other...
It's in your report up here.
Yeah. Anyway, when, when, you know, I would have problems where I worked doing maintenance, we'd usually try to get to the, to the bottom of it. So was there any transformers that was damaged? You know, and I'm trying to understand how, you know, affected one residence only. I guess that's, that's my question, is it, did we, you know, get to the bottom of it? So I guess what I don't want to see is the similar event happening again.
In the investigation, there was no evidence of any, excuse me, I'm sorry, of any damage through transformers or at the meter. There was no evidence on the system to support that there would have been damage in the home.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just, it'd have lost right now to, you know, to actually find, you know, pin down the cause.
If you see from the report, I think that's the same that Mrs. Daly's electrician and our staff were there on site, and they could find nothing wrong with anything connected to the system. So it's one of those things, I guess, Counselor, that I can't explain to you, because there's no evidence there to support it.
And now, according to this, no one was at home at the time, is this?
It was Rosemary's, Rosemary's, Rosemary was in a hospital at that point. It was her daughter that discovered the issue through different kind of evidence.
She came after the fact, but she wasn't there at the time.
You would have to ask Mrs. Daly.
That's right.
Do you want to? Go ahead, if you want to.
Did I just mention something?
Yeah, yes, please.
My understanding was that I have two lines that come into my house from that transformer. And I know when I mentioned that to Nolan Carr, he was surprised, he didn't realize that there would be two lines that came in to my house. And I have a six thousand dollar generator that I just had installed last summer, so I would have thought I was protected. But because only one line came in with the surge, the generator didn't kick in. And so that's what I was told. And I still don't have full memory of everything that happened, because I had a similar to a stroke on that day.
Is your generator...
And the generator did not kick in.
Is your generator supposed to kick in if there's a power...
It only kicks in if all the power's off.
If all the power's off.
But because only one line came in, like my washer and dryer and my TVs, they weren't affected in any way whatsoever. Only the things that I have shown you there are the things that were affected. There's a few other things that we've since found, but I haven't been able to afford an electrician to come and check. Some of my pluggings in the garage are not working, but I haven't been able to get that, you know, fully checked.
Now, does your generator also automatically turn off when the power is restored?
The generator did not come on.
Well, I'm just wondering, is it, is it designed to come on when the power goes off and then shut off?
It goes on within fifteen seconds when the power goes off, but if half of the house has still got electricity, it's not going to come on, and that's why it didn't come on.
Yeah, I guess I'm...
Which I, I guess I didn't really realize that I was only, that I had two ways of having a power surge, one line and the other line.
Well, I don't understand what you mean by one line. There's, there's two hot lines to give you two forty power in your circuits. Half of them are on the one line, and this, this, everybody's house has like that.
Yeah, I don't understand it myself.
Yeah, there's a neutral line and then two, and two hot lines. And what I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is if possibly the generator did kick on for a brief time and, and may have caused the power...
Electrician, Justin Winder, Minder, he said that the generator will not come on if half of electricity is still working. It only comes on if all the electricity goes off.
Okay.
Like, one night around one o'clock, must, the power must have gone off, because I had guests and they heard the generator come on, because it sits on my front porch. So that day, the power must have gone off for maybe ten minutes or so. And I really, I really don't know, except all I know is right now, go ahead and surge me, because I had a surge protector installed in my house. So now I've got generator and a surge protector.
Okay.
And so, Counselor Benry, you wanted to say something?
Are we talking about a brand-new home, Mrs. Daly?
Yeah, it's a three-year-old home.
Three-year-old home, and it's, it's the first one on the line.
I think I'm the only one on that transformer, as far as I was told.
Now, eight forty-one, that's the area of Paul Bradley.
I'm the only, I'm the only new house on that side of the street.
This is the cul-de-sac on two A, that would be what we call Skelga.
Oh, okay.
I have really difficulty with that whole item. First of all, because I'm not an electrician.
But I do have good news. The fridge was, my fridge was repaired this morning.
Oh, good.
Which was also, the repairman and the electrician said it was probably caused from the surge. It didn't go dead right on the surge, but it damages the motherboard or whatever, and so I've had three outings of my fridge since the surge, but it was repaired this morning, so I'll have to worry about that.
What, personally, the way I would do it, I have suffered surges, not in this country, but in Belgium, and had to put it through my insurance.
I'm a thousand dollars deductible, so, you know, with a thousand dollar deductible, and then the increase of my premiums, I better not talk to my, my insurance company.
Okay, so, and I understand where, where you're coming from. But here is a difficulty, because we have a report from the electrician, and they agree with you, they couldn't find nothing wrong, and they checked everything around the area, couldn't find nothing wrong. I do not understand what happened, I really don't. But all what I can rely on is that we have evidences that tells us that the town system was working, that there was a bump in the power, there is no denying. But is the town responsible for it? That's a question.
I concur with Counselor Creed, that there's, there's two power coming in to, to give you the two twenty, two forty, and, and the generator being hooked on. And I'm wondering if the generator is wired onto the right power side, or if, you know, is it, is it wired onto the right power side of the line that's coming in?
Right meaning correct, or right meaning right or left?
Well, right mean correct.
Okay.
Big as...
Well, his installation passed the city, the town inspection with flying colors. I have that report from the town inspector, and his installation was, you know, checked over carefully.
Well, Counsel, we have to come up with a decision. Or if you don't feel you have enough information, please let me know. Counselor Barfus?
I, I'm one of these guys, when it comes to electricity, I don't exactly understand it. And so, from my perspective, I look at the, the report from our electricians, and if the town system was functioning correctly, we're, the town is responsible up until the point where it goes to the home, and that was functioning properly, then I don't know that the town can do anything from that point.
That's what I think. Counselor Pivoy, what's your opinion?
I, I'm with Counselor Barfus, I don't understand electricity or how something like this could even happen or affect one home and not. What baffles my mind is the breakers didn't break. Makes me worried about my own home, you know, it's good grief. But, but yeah, for, for me, I would say there's, there seems to be like a lack of information here, there's, there's a missing piece, there's, there's no evidence that the town... There's no evidence that the town is at fault. So therefore, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to agree that this is the town's fault, right?
Does the town own the transformer? And the problem came in from the transformer?
Well, do we know that the problem came in from the transformer?
Your town man that came there and met my daughter admitted it on the spot.
He unfortunately failed to put it in his report to us. Now, don't get me wrong, that's very possible that, you know, if, let's say, our employees were to blame, then I would say our employees might not be the best ones to verify their own work, right? But I'm just thinking that if an insurance, you know, person were to come, do a report and say, hey, the town's to blame, that would, that would help me understand who was at fault here.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Maybe we need to direct administration to verify the point with the transformer and try to understand what the situation was at that point and bring back that report to counsel. And we should maybe postpone the decision until we have further information because I feel we lacking something here in order to make a wise decision.
The closest thing I see here is Mr. Justin Winder. And I've worked with him, he's a good guy, third party. But he didn't even indicate that it was, you know, the town's. Maybe we need a letter from him or something showing, because in this report, there's no evidence that Justin thought it was the town's fault either.
May I in, please? Just if I might, the report that we have from the electricians was the inspection of the electrical panel was checked there. They checked the transformer, they checked the meter, they checked both legs coming in on the meter, what Counsel Creed was talking about. And the one leg where the half of the home wasn't being used or was out of power at that time showed that there was no power going into that leg. So their explanation to me means that that half of it wasn't being used. So they knew that the power was out in that part.
Oh, right, yeah. No, there was no current in that.
How many hours they took to check this out and what they did? Do you want to see it?
Maybe you want to give Mayan. And I can do.
I think we need to do a little bit more further investigation.
What I can do is have Leonard Chung to perhaps the CCW meeting because again, he can answer those detailed questions about how the electrical works and I cannot.
Okay, so Rosemary, here is a decision that we are going to make. If, Counsel, if you are in agreement, we will ask for administration to bring Leonard, our electrician, to the next meeting, which is a CCW. Rosemary, if you would like to attend that meeting, will be...
What day is that?
It's the first Tuesday of the month at 4:00.
I'll be away until the 4th of May, so what's the first day? What's the first Tuesday?
Just a second, I'm just pulling up. May, the 2nd isn't it? It is May the 6th.
May the 6th, I'll be here.
Okay, so if you don't mind coming back, we need a little bit more information.
I did ask the town if I could speak to that electrician, but they didn't seem to want to give me his name.
Okay, well, when you come to that meeting, you might be able to address some of the questions. Would that be all right? Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, Rosemary, I think that, I speak for all of us, there's not a single person on the council that isn't sympathetic to the situation. And absolutely, if it turns out it's the town's fault, right? I mean, we're probably all in agreement, we need to do something to take care of it. But right now, though, just the evidence that we've been given to this point is just really hard to verify that. So it's hard for us to make that kind of decision. As the mayor said, if it was an act of God, the town can't insure every act of God, you know, et cetera. If it was something the town did wrong, some kind of negligence or whatever, then certainly that's, will be taken care of.
From what my daughter reported to me, that it was very clear in the town, the man she called when she went back to the house and couldn't get in and she realized the power was off on the garage door opener. So then she got the neighbor to open the door and then she called the town. And from what she remembers him saying, it was very, it was very clear that it was the transformer that had caused the problem. So that's what I based all of this on.
And it's fair assumption, except we need to understand that.
If I might verify that. What would have happened is in the wind, it would have on, potentially, if the transformer could have flipped a switch and that might be where the miscommunication was. Because it'll, when it bumps like that, it'll flip the switch on.
Well, sorry, we couldn't make a decision right there for lack of understanding of the problem. So it's better to postpone it and to make the proper decision with the right facts. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Rosemary, can I ask one more question?
I'm sorry, I'm hard to hear, so I'm missing about 50% of what you guys have said.
Would you be willing to let maybe the town electrician? I'd actually like to go and see how your generator is wired, how it's set up.
Sure.
It's best if the...
Well, I want to go with the electrician, with the town electrician, just so that I can understand that myself.
Sure, what? I'll be leaving this Saturday and be back on the 4th of May.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always best if the town...
Well, I think Leonard's look at every electrician, because I, you have a little knowledge.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Creed?
Okay, can...
Can I just suggest, if you read this final paragraph, it says that one leg had power, the other leg had no power. How come it had only one power to one transformer?
She said current, which would mean that there's no device in the house drawing current. In other words, if everything had burned out.
From our letter, from the, from the electricians, it said. The meter was gained, it checked at a normal voltage. So we checked the pad mount transformer, always normal there too. We then checked current on the legs and found that there was current on only one of the legs.
Yeah, so...
Now, is that current coming into the house? Or is it current from the house, from the meter into the house?
Well, it would have been current going into the house. There could have been, there was voltage, but no current. In other words, everything was shut off. There was nothing drawing, drawing power in the house from that, from that leg. So there was voltage, but no current. In other words, if it had burned out, everything on that side.
I agree that we need to have more information from our electrician.
Well, I would really like to have more.
We will deal with that. I think we gave that recommendation to our administration. And Counselor Creed, you may want to talk with administration.
I'll, yeah, if it's not appropriate, that's fine, but if...
Well, just talk with administration, just to make sure that we're not micromanaging.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'd just like to understand it personally.
I understand, you are passionate about that and I'm happy that you understand something which I do not understand much of. All right, let's go to 7B, Southwest Alberta Road Safety Donation. This is a donation that is requested by Office Officer Lloyd Stewart. And we've done that in the past. The fee requested is indeed $300 for the use of the ice rink for the bicycle rodeo, which allows students in town and to learn about traffic safety when on a bike. And so it's a very good program. So I need a motion to be passed forward.
Has that bike rodeo already happened?
No.
No. The bike rodeo that we knew something about Lloyd Stewart being involved was in another town, wasn't 4:00.
Well, we had a bike rodeo here in town.
It has been held.
It has been held last week, wasn't it?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah.
It was 15th and 16th of April.
Oh, sorry, April 15th and 16th. So anyways, so that didn't come on time for us. So are you willing to allow for that?
I'd like to make a motion that we do that, the $300 rental fee.
All right.
Well, so...
Any, any questions regarding that?
I do have one question, just maybe, since administration's back. On these, and I get that it's an application for donation, when it's a fee waiver, does that show up as, do we do like an entry? Do we show a donation and then a collection of this money? Or is it just a move, fee waiver?
We don't show it in the books, but we do track all of these donations.
Right.
So that at the end of the year, we can establish how much has actually been donated by the town.
So it allows us to know what to put in about it for the following years.
Well, it's not necessarily a budget consideration, but this is a prime example of potential in lost revenue. So if we start to see a trend, we can go back and track some of this information.
How many bike rodeos do we host a year? Two?
One.
One, only once?
Yeah, that's only one. But we do them all around Southern Alberta and our peace officer participates in that.
So he's only requesting the $300. But is there other expenses for him to travel to these other bike rodeos and participate as a... Do we need to increase that amount to cover the cost?
Not for that. No, the bike rodeo, they get donations from the community to cover most of the expenses. We have individuals who come in from outside to volunteer their time and Lloyd reciprocates that. So is there a cost? Yes. But we also gain the benefit when it's in our community as well.
Okay, I just wanted to give that $300 and do it.
It's all the regional, the regional group comes and support each other in all the different towns. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Okay, pass, thank you. All right, 2014 AUMA Convention Resolutions. Marion put that in a package because every municipality has the privilege to put forward a resolution. And she gave us the way a resolution can be done. Here is what I have in mind. And I'm wondering if something of that sort should be dealt with. The tax, the education tax is going up and up and up. It's going up 6%.
We have no control here.
And what I am looking at is the following. In some provinces, the municipalities do not collect the education tax. In BC, the government collects that directly. Needs to be collected by municipality, municipality requested that that be taken out of their duties. And it was many, many years back. I see benefit of not having municipality collect that. What I see for a problem for us in our town, as I explained during my presentation on the governance education days, is that one, once the education meal rate goes up, even if we do our best to keep our revenue and expenses stable, this meal rate will affect the overall municipal meal rate and will increase taxes. And so people on our trail tell us, reduce tax, keep the tax low and everything, without really understanding sometime where the causes of the increase comes from. And very often, as it is right now, no matter how much we try hard to reduce our expenses, as you could witness, and keep our revenue at a fairly decent size without increasing taxes, true tax, we have people who are unhappy. And I always say, we can't afford all those taxes. So it's another time for the province of Alberta to stop using the municipalities as their bankers, especially when the tax cannot be collected and we have to pay no matter what. And we become the banker for the province. It's not maybe the time to have a resolution and to put that forward as an idea. It might be tossed up by other municipalities. But if nobody, if nobody brings it forward, then it will never be addressed with the government.
Counsel Banquet?
My concern is that, the requisition from the school. But the, but the bigger thing is, there's absolutely no explanation of what they do with it. And I think that is right out the lunch. If we're collecting taxes and they're asking for tax dollars, we need to know how it's being spent.
Oh, that tells you how it's being spent, it's all the new schools and teaching and contracts.
They do not, they do not tell you how it's being spent. And they have no obligation to tell you how it's spent. And I think that's wrong.
Well, if you read, if you read the 2014 budget, it tells you how many schools are projected and how much more staffs that will need. It's all projected, right? It's as good as a projection as we do. But essentially, the question is, should municipality carry on collecting the taxes for education? What's your opinion, Counsel Creed?
I could write some great pork wheras for that resolution. A lot of, you know, there's a lot of good reasons. I mean, as you mentioned some of them and as you've talked about it, I thought of a lot of other good wherases to put into that, that resolution. I think it's excellent.
Counsel Baffis, what's your opinion?
I thought for a long time that it would be nice if the province had to take responsibility for the increase in taxes. And I think that helps be more accountable. Your tax increases that they're demanding for education, that people understand that that's where it's going to. So I think it's a great idea.
Counsel Pivoy?
I agree with you that that's right in line with the AUMA mandate. That's what they want to do to help municipalities. And I think that, I'm surprised it hasn't been proposed previous.
Maybe then we have to take the lead.
It has, we need to re-propose it.
Counsel Banquet?
I agree with you, Mayor, and there's one more item that I think needs to be addressed is how are we going to tackle medical marijuana? Because that's becoming a very prevalent.
Hang on there. That is another item for, for another day. But that can be dealt through land use bylaw, okay? Under the province and do exactly what Calgary has done. Calgary has a model that can be followed.
Last week is being hit about it right now.
But let's, let's deal with this one first. Let's deal with education and then we'll deal with your item. So for education, would you like to see as right a resolution?
I would love to see you draft a resolution.
Thank you, I knew you would send that my way. And I'm fair, and maybe with administration, I can get a little bit of advice.
Sounds like Counsel Creed has some ideas.
And Counsel Creed has some ideas and maybe you can feed me a few ideas.
Every minor may can be voted back.
All right, so all in favor of having a resolution?
Okay, do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I would love to make that motion. I believe that the mayor with some advisors put together a recommendation to AUMA for an education resolution.
Education tax.
On the education tax, well...
Collection of education.
I hate to limit it to just that, you know. Add two, three more wherases and be a result, solve some problems.
I guess I go too far.
Perhaps a motion could be as simple as to draft the motion.
A resolution to bring back to council.
That's permanent.
Because you'll have to approve the official.
Yeah, we have to. Okay, would that be okay? Has to be done fairly rapidly as you could sense.
Draft.
Yes.
And wheras you could be...
So all in favor? Thank you. I thought maybe there'll be a time to stand for what's right.
Good.
Yes? Counsel self-evaluation?
Oh, did we want to come back to this issue or...
Oh, your issue.
I'm concerned that maybe we as a council need to start addressing that issue and make sure that it's in our planning documentations that were wide-eyed and clearly right.
You know, I had, I had spoken about that issue a few times with administration and we knew... we knew sooner or later, we wanted to address how we were going to deal with now provincial law, federal law, and be able to, through land use by law, address the issue. Yeah. We, we had that underway somewhere.
If I can, just for clarification, Councilor Bangry, are you recommending maybe something to AUMA or just us as a council dealing with it locally?
I think, I think us as a council need to start dealing with it locally and, and get our ducks in a row.
So just for clarification, you're wanting us to put together so that we can have medical marijuana?
Okay. Let me tell you, let me tell you that it's at the AUMA that I learned when I was in Edmonton, that Calgary has designed a land use by law. And the way they have it is that only, the only possibility would be in a commercial industrial zone away from the core of the town.
Then I'm suggesting that we also need to look at that policy that Calgary has drafted and other areas and make sure that we have a land use policy drafted before it happens so that we're, we've got that in place.
I agree. Okay. So all the, the recommendation will be for administration to start to look at the implication of the possibility of marijuana.
Medical marijuana.
Growing.
Grow up.
Commercial grow up.
It, it sounds funny, but I think we need to be prepared.
You're right.
I agree with you.
I totally agree.
He'll make the dog course probably.
Okay. Council, are we ready for item 7E? 7E, please. Council self-evaluation. If you remember when we had our first week together, we had said that within six months we would evaluate how we functioning as, as a council.
Why don't five?
And thank you. And we, what we would like to do, we would like to have this done before the end of June. And we would like to see it not done as a separate item, but maybe tag it on before or after a meeting, half an hour, something like that. Are you fair game with something like that?
Just to clarify, are you indicating that we fill this out separately and then bring it to that meeting?
Yes.
Or fill it out collectively at?
Yes. No, you fill it separately and then we'll, we'll discuss those items and our relationship with administration, et cetera. All that will be fair game and open and.
Do you want us to do it individually? These are six councilors, so.
Yeah.
We could pair off and.
No, I think you want to do it individually and be able to decide how you're doing that and then we'll discuss that together. Marion?
I think the intent of it is to get a better understanding of how you as individual councilors are feeling about your role on council. So I would agree with the mayor. I think it's important.
There's not enough writing space, is there?
And then when you talk collectively, then you can come up with solutions.
Yeah. It will be, the only objective of this exercise would be to even improve our performance. And I think that will, it's always healthy to reflect on it.
Can we set the date?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for is, do you want to do it on a CCW, first CCW in June? And it might be less busy at that point. Would that work?
One question while we're on that subject.
Go ahead.
Historically, has council had less council meetings through the summer?
Yes.
Yes.
We used to.
In June, we will probably, maybe in May, we're going to decide when our, our July and August meeting will be. In July, we normally have one meeting, sometime two. And in August, probably one.
Now, are you, in addition to committee of the whole?
No, actually, we, we.
No, part of.
Combined. Not have committee of the whole in the summer. And we've had one council meeting.
Yeah.
So that's what kind of why I ask.
It will be one meeting in July and August. It has been the past. I mean, we can have more if you so wishes, but.
So Mary, you're thinking June 3rd?
Yeah, June 3rd. Oh, gosh. I might not even be there.
I, I will not be there.
Okay. So what about if we look at the last meeting in May?
You could do CCW in May.
Would that work?
It's going to take you two minutes to.
Yeah.
That's actually not a bad idea.
Okay. So let's do it in May.
CCW in May. Again, I'm not saying I have to be there, but that is the one, I'll be singing and dancing downstairs.
That's the 27th of May.
What if, what if we, there's a fifth Tuesday in May?
There is.
What if we moved our CCW meeting to that fifth Tuesday?
That's 27th of May.
27th, yeah, we can do that.
If we move our CCW instead of June 3rd?
Instead of June 3rd.
Oh.
I could be there at that one.
That could be a possibility. Marion, that give us enough time to decide that.
Put a motion forward.
Yes.
Put a motion.
Would you like to put motion forward?
I'll move that we do our CCW instead of June 3rd on May 27th.
Actually, that should be a council meeting as I look at my.
Oh, that's the fifth.
It, no, it's a, it's only a fourth. I thought it was a fifth.
Is it?
It's only a fourth.
No.
It's a fifth Wednesday.
It's the last Wednesday.
May. Oh, yeah, but it is.
But it's still okay. We could.
We could do the CCW.
You could do this especially at that meeting.
Meeting at four and having a CCW for an hour and then going to council.
It doesn't work to do a CCW and a council meeting.
Why don't we just discuss this with the council meeting? So we could do it.
On May 27th.
I'm just thinking if, if the mayor's not going to be there on the third and I'm not going to be there on the third, then if we could.
Let's just do the self-evaluation on the 27th.
Very council.
At that council meeting.
Okay. So we have to do it a little bit earlier on.
So May 27th.
May 27th, that meeting is at 5:00. So what about 4:30?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Make an emotion for 4:30.
Marion, would 4:30 work if we were to come a little bit earlier or quarter to 4:45?
We'll just schedule it for the end of the meeting.
For the end of the meeting?
I think that's probably better, just to get your council business done and then spend half an hour. You don't want to make this a.
No, it's not supposed to be long.
You just want to do a little bit of self-reflection here.
Okay. All right. So it'll be done at that point.
May I ask though, are we doing something with the June 3rd CCW meeting?
That's my question. Are we?
June, June the 3rd, I have to be in Calgary for my husband's surgery.
I'm in San Francisco, so there's, love to be with you, but.
I'm away.
And Marion's away.
Definitely need to move her away.
Dropping like flies.
I, I have the feeling that in that case, if we don't have an administration, it's a little bit senseless because we cannot ask a question we need to ask.
Well, Jeff will be here. I'm just over here.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but Councilor Barfis and Councilor Pivot, are you going to be here? No, it's this CCW that I'm going to miss, this upcoming, next week.
Okay. We'll leave it the way it is and we'll carry on. Jeff will be there taking Marion's tips and, and we'll be short too, but that's okay. They still give you five and it's still kickable.
Why don't we move it to Tuesday, May 10th?
No, it's best to leave it the way it is. I think so.
Move what to Tuesday, May?
Move our CCW to Tuesday, May 10th.
That's your council meeting? You have it.
Mostly because May 10th isn't a Tuesday, but that's okay.
Oh, June 10th.
All right. I think the last chance we make, the best it is really.
Yeah.
I got left to can.
Let's deal with 7E, letter to citizens. This is a letter that I wrote to try to explain a little bit to citizens, the difference between taxation assessment. In fact, I would love to add a line regarding that taxation of education issue and impact on taxes also. Essentially, what we need to know is how do we want to disseminate such information? We are risking to incur costs when we cannot fit it within municipal affairs. So my suggestion will be that to allow administration to decide, one, they have very few items in the municipal affairs and then kind of put it inside there so that we don't incur any more costs.
Mayor Cronin, what, what sparked this letter? Because I, I haven't heard of any disruptions or, you know.
Well, let me tell you why. This is a, a point to allow citizens to understand how the taxes come to be what they are, to help them understand assessment versus taxation, what we are responsible for and what we really are not responsible for. So you could call it an education piece to the population. And if you do not want it sent, it will not be sent.
My only concern is, is when you draft a letter like this, 30% of the public understand it, 70% of the public don't understand it, we're going to embark on a total chaos to our town administration trying to explain assessment and differentiation between assessment and mill rate and everything else. And I, I, myself, I don't think that this is needed at this point in time. I don't know if, if our administration agrees with that.
Okay. Can I tell you why I did it? Three years ago, I did the same thing for council. In fact, it was well received by people in this town and appreciated, understanding the difference. Because as I said, I never understood how my taxes came to be what they are. So it was education. For the same reason, I thought, well, why don't we upgrade that letter and continue educating? That's the only reason. But if you as a council feel that it is redundant and should not be there, then we won't have it. Simple.
Personally, I really like the idea of the letter. I, I think there's just a couple of points and maybe, maybe just a couple of questions. We set mill rate on what day?
In May.
We will set that the first council meeting in May. We anticipate having the final budget for the first, for the CCW meeting in May.
So, and, and at that same time, we'll, we'll know what the school assessment is as well.
We already know what the school, I reported that about a month ago.
And it's up, right? We know it's up. Right. So I guess, I guess what I would recommend, just based on this letter, as a citizen, I would love to have this in correlation with the announcement of the mill rate. Just say, hey, mill rate is here, town mill rate, you know, wherever it went. If it, if it did go up, we explain, hey, why? In addition, obviously, the school portion did go up as well. And that way, it kind of goes along with an announcement. I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're trying to educate them to prepare them for the news and that was the intent of the letter. I think, I kind of agree with Councilor Bangry in the sense that you don't want to create confusion just like a week before you come out with the big thing. So rather than, I guess what I'm referring to is the question right at the top. Will my taxes go up this year? I would rather, instead of a question, if that were an answer, here's why my taxes went up. Or here's why it didn't. And if we're able to, for instance, lower our portion of the mill rate, I think that should be celebrated in this letter. You know, the town council was able to lower the mill rate, you know, and then in the letter it explains, but.
Or how.
The province stepped in.
How did your taxes come?
Okay.
Right. So if, if, I would just say, me personally getting this and reading this, I would love it to be in, in connection with the announcement. And then you get the explanation and the announcement all together. As opposed to, right now, I think, I understand what you're saying about this might raise more questions, which would be then answered like the following week.
Okay.
So that's just my thought.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you so much. Any other comments?
I like the idea of the letter. One of the things that I struggle with when I've been writing letters to the citizens is to give them the information that they, especially in an education piece like this, that they need to have and short enough so that they actually read it.
So what do you suggest? Give me an idea.
I don't know. I, I don't know what the answer is. You've done, this is a complicated issue. And it's difficult to explain it in a short little blurb that people are going to be able to understand and take with them. I've had lots of people ask me over the years, you know, I, council keeps telling me that their mill rate didn't go up, but my taxes did. And that's exactly what you're trying to, to deal with here.
Trying to educate them with.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure that I have an answer. I, I just agree that I see it as a, an issue that somehow would be great if we could get the population to understand how their taxes work. Because that's the one thing they see that we do.
Councilor Creed? Well, yeah, absolutely.
You know, in, in the effort to educate, I, I'm, you know, the, the public, I'm all for it and I, I agree with Councilor Barfis, it's sometimes difficult to help them. I mean, I, I, you know, I could try and write something. I mean, you, you've done a good job here.
Thank you.
Sometimes I, I would, being, being interested in math, I would actually even like to show them the, the formulas because some people might understand that. You know, having, having tried to, to actually teach or tutor people in math, I find that it's a very individual thing. Some people will understand it one way, some people will understand it another way. And so you have to sometimes have multiple ways to explain it before, you know, different people will get it. And so.
Yeah, and if I may, just to add to that, I really appreciate that administration has put together those charts and graphs downstairs that almost to a fault simplify system. But, but if, if those, like especially just the part where it's like the town mill rate versus the school tax, right, side by side, if that went out at the same time as this together, packaged together, then you get your simplified, you know, bird's eye view here. And then down here, you get the explanation and the details. And, and as, yes, Councilor Creed was pointing out, I think that would satisfy the different learning styles. We get the people that aren't going to read it all, but they say, eh, all right, I get it.
All right. So essentially, here is what I need to know. Do you want that letter to go to the citizens? Yes or no?
Absolutely.
Let me see.
I do.
Yes?
I'd like to see.
Okay. Yes.
I'd like to see a letter go out, but I'd like to see it a little bit simplified, a lot, lot, a lot more simplified. Because people, they, they want things kept very simple.
Okay. The simplification might be in the visual.
In the, in the, in a formula like Councilor Creed said and then explanation of that, of that, of that formula.
Is there a way maybe that we could have the general part of it put together in a paragraph or two with a, a link or something saying, if you want the full details on this, to go someplace else for the more details than the graph or something like that? I'm just wondering if there's a way to give what needs to have, be there to get people looking at it without giving them so much that they're not looking at it.
Well, may, maybe what I'll do, I'll, I'll look at that letter again and try to see if I can bring it under a different format. Okay? If I can change the format, maybe I simplify it, I will bring it back and then let me know. I'll do it for CCW.
Or even leave the letter, but create a summary that goes out, like I'm just thinking on social media, like Facebook page of the town. Here's the summary. Click here to get the full report from the mayor.
That's, that's kind of the, the thought process I was in. I don't know how to do that with a newspaper or something.
Yeah, newspaper, that's.
The only thing I can tell you, I've been surprised by people stopping me, and I was saying that to Marion in the past two weeks, that about 10 people that spoke, not related to each other, and said, I truly appreciate reading firsthand what we as town and council mayor have to say in those letter to the citizens. And I thought, okay, that's interesting.
I think, I think the population in general enjoys seeing what's happening here. Because they're not, they're not all watching it on Channel 32. They're not going to YouTube. And if they do go to YouTube. and if they do go to YouTube, they're not going to watch two hours of YouTube.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
So I will bring that letter back and see what we can do with it. Thank you.
A great letter.
Well, thank you. I appreciate, but I'm not afraid to give criticism.
It's good.
And in fact, I appreciate criticism if we can do things better. Seven F, Carston County grant application. I need a motion to allow for a grant to be applied for under the Growing Forward to Regional Water Supply Strategic Program for Regional Rural Water Distribution Systems Study. It's a mouthful, but essentially is to allow the county, including Hillspring and Glenwood and Carston, South and Margaret area, to do a detailed study for regional water lines. That is the purpose. And as you know, when you want to have a grant, the more support you have from communities around, the better the grant. So they helped us with other grants, and it's our turn to help them. It does not involve any cash contribution. Marion?
I would just add that one of the other benefits of that is we will be able to identify the, our ability to be able to provide to those regional lines within our boundaries as well. So there is benefit to the town to participate in this.
So if somebody wants to put a motion forward as.
Can you read that again, as you're reviewing the motion?
Okay. So the motion that I'm looking for is to, is to write a letter of support to the Carston County Grant Application under the Growing Forward to Regional Water Supply Strategic Program for Regional Rural Water Distribution, Distribution Systems Study.
I will so move.
Yeah, you just copy paste that a F.
Because you'll, you'll know.
Just hand that to Graham.
Repeat that verbatim.
Marion?
If I might, after you discuss this motion, I just have a comment I'd like to make.
Okay. So any questions, comment, questions for administration?
I'd love to hear the comment first.
It has to do with motions.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay. The importance of the motion is that the person that really put the motion forward should have the full reading and.
If you want to hand that to me, I'm more than happy to read it, but.
All right? Okay, all in favor? Okay, Marion, give us your two beds of information and education.
I know where this is going.
No, it's okay. I've discussed this with Graham a couple of times when we're reviewing the minutes the next day, because he's sometimes struggling to know how to put the motion together. And I think that it would be worthwhile for us to come.
Prepared.
For us, if you would come prepared with a motion, kind of outlining, like, whereas there's a benefit to the town of Carston, for instance, in this, to participate in a study for regional water lines, we move to send a letter of support. It just, when we look back at those minutes years from now, I think it's very beneficial for those in the future.
To know why, the purpose.
To be able to, to get the intent of the motion, rather than just the basic motion. So if we can just think about that as we're, as we're formulating motions, I think it would.
Marion, a hundred percent I agree with you. As in many towns that have adopted that, a very specific format, and every motion reads the same way, and you know exactly where you're going to find the purpose, and then how it's going to work out. I agree. So we shall try. That's part of our goals.
So in this particular case, Madam Mayor, I'd suggest that you handed that letter over to Councilor Barfus, so that he could form a motion with that wording.
That's the difficulty, and if you're prepared in advance.
Okay, most of the backgrounder will give you the wording.
That material was there for it, yes.
For the motion. So in other words, if you refer to that, you normally should be able to find the proper wording. Okay? All right, let's move forward. We need under.
Financial report.
Seven G.
Seven G.
Oh, seven G, right.
That won't take long. I give a quick report.
Okay. Could you?
Yep.
Could you tell me something about that Health Advisory Council?
Do that.
And I will always say, counselor, and any of us, if we bring an item to the table, it is best if we have the proper backgrounder, because then we can make better sense of it, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And I only bring it as an added item today because time is short on, on this particular item. So as we've discussed in the past, on the twenty, excuse me, on the thirteenth of May, so a couple of weeks from now, the Health Advisory Council is meeting in Tabor for our district. The, the southern district has been named the Old Man River District.
Right.
And so our, that's our Health Advisory Council, they're meeting in Tabor. They, they have a form that, because I was asked by this council back on March 25th to look into attending and getting us on their agenda, basically getting us on their radar, so to speak. The specific wording was to better understand the committee's mandate and, you know, help them be aware of our, our needs in this community. I spoke with Mr. Olson from Economic Development, who has done some work on this in the past. He, he pointed out that one of the problems that we have as a community is we haven't fully formed yet what we're asking from the province. There's a lot of debate, do we want a new hospital? Do we want them to fix this hospital? Do we want to mix private with public? Do we want specialized services offered here in Carston, or just general practice? Do we want to add numbers of beds and invite doctors from, say, Lethbridge to come and use our facilities here, et cetera? The problem is that we haven't come together on what those answers are, therefore what the vision or the strategic plan that we all agree that we're, we're asking for. So I, I talked to a couple of people, including Counselor Curl from the county, and, I guess, Deputy Reeve Curl. And he invited Ron Johnson, Dr. Kim Taylor, Dr. Playfair, and a couple of others to come together and just have that discussion of, hey, we need to form a committee, we need to make our decisions, what we want, and we need to kind of all get on the same page here. Because right now, there's no actual place where everybody's meeting together to discuss the common vision. His proposal, because the current hospital is in the town, his, his recommendation, this is Deputy Reeve Curl, was that the town begin just an ad hoc committee to begin these conversations, put together a committee where these doctors and entrepreneurs and different people have their input, they get that common shared vision, and then we take that to the Health Advisory Council. So we are basically looking at names of who should be on that committee, but the committee needs to be started somewhere. His recommendation was that it be a town committee. We don't have to do it. If we do not do it, this is what it will look like, we'll recommend that we come, get on the agenda, tell them our spiel, and then we'll, we'll try to get on the following agenda, which would be a month later, and hopefully have some kind of plan to show them then. We'll get input from these various individuals in an unorganized way, and do the best we can with what we have currently. Obviously, we're going to take into account the report we're getting May 9th, which is very important, that's key. But unfortunately, we don't have any time to make any decisions between May 9th and May 13th, so we need to have some of our ducks in a row before that, which means we need to actually meet this Thursday. The doctors have emailed back, they can attend, but again, they just want to know what they're attending, who's in charge, why, you know, what's the mandate of the committee, and by what authority, basically.
Well, essentially, you're raising many, many important points. We have an intermunicipal meeting, which mean that the county and us will be sitting together on May 9th. And we have asked for Grant Walker to be there. He is the director for all infrastructures, so hospitals rebuilt, et cetera, for the southern part of Alberta. He is also the one who presented the report on the health issues and the way they intend to deal with them. And if you remember, that prompted us to write a letter because we were concerned the physician had not been invited at the table to discuss the issues. As you can see in your packet, there is a correspondence and a reply to that, that assures us, and if you remember, we sent it right up to the minister, we sent it to the county, we sent it right up to the president of Mayor and Reeve, which is the mayor of Raymond. And we wanted to make sure that all stakeholders knew our displeasure of not having had those people at the table. Now I see that Marion wants to interject.
Just for clarification, I just checked that, that intermunicipal meeting is May 7.
Oh, sorry.
It's Wednesday, May 7. Sorry.
Wednesday, May 7, which mean, is there one more council meeting in between?
No, have the.
Actually, May 13th is council, so if I attend in Tabor, I will also miss that day. If I represent the town in Tabor.
So I understand the, the desire to have a little bit of a town representation, is that should there be a town committee?
Who, who was the doctors that?
So specifically Ron Johnson, Dr. Kim Taylor, and Dr. Playfair. Playfair, I believe, is from Nottingham.
Yes, yes.
Is he? Okay. Sorry, I don't know.
So here, here was the problem, because we were presented with the future of the hospital at that meeting, very specifically the timeline, which was really brought forward from 10 years to five years, Marion, if I remember right, three to five years. There is a plan in place and a time where we were told at that meeting that the political body will need to get together and start to put a little bit of a pressure. And we understand that, and that came from, from the source. So we understand there is a time. So I'm wondering, are we derailing, derailing the process at this point and starting run parallel to what we're trying to do? That's my concern. Although I appreciate the need to have the physicians.
I, I appreciate Deputy Reeve Curl's passion for this one, because he's, he's done, communicated a great deal on this, actually. My understanding is, is there's a, a doctor who's been fairly involved in putting this forward, that's not on that list.
Well, and the list is not definitive. Those were some names of people that have been invited and said they would come. The, the actual purpose for the first time we would get together is to discuss which people should be in attendance at these kinds of meetings.
What, what I'm getting, I think, is a little bit what Mayor was referring to. Dr. Clark has been working on this for some time. I don't think it's as scattered as maybe the impression you've been given it is. I would be hesitant to put together a committee without talking to the people who've already been fairly involved in putting stuff together.
All would be invited.
And that, that's where my concern is.
All would be invited, absolutely. Yeah. That's, that's kind of what we're trying to put together. Because right now, nobody's inviting anybody to anything. Nobody's sitting down with the right people, and we're saying, let's all sit down together in the same room, and let's just have it out. What do you people want? You want to transfer all medical, you know, facilities to Lethbridge? Because if we do nothing, that will be the result.
Well, yes and no.
Can I just make a suggestion here? This is really an intermunicipal issue. It's not a town, because the hospital's in town, it isn't a town issue, it's a town and county issue. That hospital serves a greater area. So would it be appropriate, rather than trying to form another kind of ad hoc committee, that it be dealt with through the intermunicipal committee, which has equal representation between the town and the county? And perhaps you could invite the, the physicians to a meeting to have a discussion, who should be at the table, what are some of the issues that you see? That way, it's a, it's more of a.
It's a political body that has a little bit more weight.
Yeah, it's more of a structured political body, I would say, where you would want to bring other interested parties within the community to have that discussion.
Okay.
Because I, I would want to see it circumvent that committee that's already had those discussions.
Okay. Would it be then, to our best interest, at, at this intermunicipal meeting, we have, Mr. Walker will be coming and presenting, would it be wise then to have a second delegation with the doctor and the representation of the clinic there, with also people who have had an impact there, and to come make or speak with that, at that intermunicipal meeting, and come to express that, which will still give them enough time then to present at the 13th of May?
Just so we're clear, what I'm proposing is not to exclude anyone, but to include every single possible stakeholder, every single one, in an initial meeting that they are invited to, hosted by the town. To have a discussion about how to move forward, whether or not to form an official committee, whether or not to name said committee, and have representation from government. Like you say, maybe it's too soon for government to be involved. That would be the discussion that that first meeting would have. Do we want some government support? Do you want the town and county? And that's what, you know, essentially Deputy Reeve Curl is saying is, you know, do you want government to start, you know, writing letters, making recommendations? At this point, the advice from the Minister of Health has been, go talk to your local advisory council, you know, get it approved through them. We don't know yet, I mean, they're still working out their mandate. We don't know yet what that's going to look like. But we, we do think this is an opportunity for us to get in on the early stage in the advisory council development. We can get on their agenda, we can, you know, even if it's just to get on the agenda to say hi, this is a concerning Carston, and at your next meeting, we're going to come prepared with, you know, a proposal.
Maybe.
I think I'd like to see what the intermunicipal committee.
Well, that's a whole point, you see. What we need to find out at that meeting, which we already heard, and probably will be the similar presentation, is where we're going with that. And maybe the question would be then, from Counselor Curl or for myself, Deputy Reeve, is to really start to say, okay, we understand there is a time when the political body and stakeholders need to have a say. So where does it fit in the timeline? And then we'll know what we have to do. And I want to know, what is the relationship between Mr. Walker, who is a director of infrastructure, and in charge of the moving forward of a project, and the advisory committee? Well, who is on the top, who is on the bottom? So long we don't understand that relationship, are we going to go the wrong way? I do not know. I do not know what is a structure under Alberta Health Service. Marion, do you understand that structure?
No, I'm not sure where the Health Advisory Committee fits it. I think that was why Counselor Poy was asked if he would attend to get a, a better sense of what their mandate was.
Sure.
And essentially, I think that's what we need to find out, is to go on that reconnaissance kind of mission. Find out exactly who does what and under, and to whom they're, they're answered. Because if they answered to the director of infrastructure, well, then Ms. Walker to the director directly, right? But if they answered, if, if the opposite way, then we know where we can put our two bets worth of concerns.
Yeah, and keep in mind, the committee I'm recommending that we form. Yeah, and keep in mind, the committee I'm recommending that we form is, although the date we're talking about is prior to the advisory council meeting, that may not be the body that the committee decides to even approach when they get together and meet. See, before we figure out what the advisory council is for, we first have to figure out what we want. And that's the level, even before that, that's the level we haven't established yet. We're not in agreement as to what we want yet. Our town isn't on the same page with our doctors, who aren't on the same page with the investors.
I do not know that we're not on the same page with the doctor.
Well, to give you an example, Mayor, if I may, I know of several investors who are ready to put private money in, meanwhile, there's other doctors saying, no, we want this to just be 100% publicly funded. So we need to figure out, do we want a private clinic attached to this, you know, and go cooperative?
I see what you're trying to say.
We don't know what we're asking for yet. This committee would help us determine, what are we asking for? What do we want as a community? And are we all on the same page? Because if we go, let's say, you're saying, hey, we're already talking to Walker, and we want the following, well, who's "we"? Is that the town that's talking to Walker? Because the doctors don't feel like they've been involved. And I think that we, as a town, should probably get together with the doctors and have us all on the same page, so that no matter who's talking to who, we're all saying the same story. We've all got the same vision. And, you know, if there's going to be private money in addition to public, there, by the way, there's another recommendation, that we go entirely private. We forget Alberta Health, and we privately fund our own facility. We need to have that conversation with the doctors, who, by the way, some of them are willing to throw some money into that personally, if we go that direction. But again, if we're sitting over here just talking about a public facility, and we're not including them in that conversation, we're missing the collaboration that I think we need. So, long story short, we don't have to do anything, that's fine. I can go and do reconnaissance on the advisory council. I'm just recommending that we probably all get in the same room together and have that discussion.
Okay. Counselor Bank, please.
Are we trying to reinvent the wheel? If Counselor Barfa says that Dr. Clark has been working on this thing for a long time, why don't we go back to him and say, how far have you gone? And what do we need to include so that the mandate of that committee is very sound and very direct, so that if the committee knows where they're going before they start, you know, putting things into action?
That's very possible that Clark would chair the committee.
All right. Then, is that possible, the same way as we invited Ron Johnson, who represented the doctor's position? If we invited him to the intermunicipal meeting?
By Dr. Clark?
Or with Dr. Clark, which ever represents is more representative? And to have them make a presentation, a recommendation?
Well, I guess, once again, I think you're just a little ahead. They don't know what their presentation or recommendation would be yet. That we need to have a meeting where we discuss what that recommendation is.
But do they know themselves, if they want?
That's right.
I think what Counselor Pivoy is talking about is exactly what the intermunicipal committee was trying to accomplish. That's why they invited Dr. Walker down to discuss what is Alberta Health Services' position here? What is their intent with the new hospital? So they have an understanding, because there is a lot of hearsay, I guess, if I might say, difference of opinions out in the community. We could perhaps invite representation from the clinic to be in attendance there, so that at least public, everyone's sort of hearing the same story. I think we'd have to be careful about inviting Alberta Health Services employees.
Right.
Into a group like that, because it could put them in a bit of a difficult position.
And that's why I think what I'm proposing is a very, very much more basic meeting prior to that.
I think I would like to see that. But my concern is, is that... How to phrase this? There are some unknown agendas that have done some end rounds already, that have caused some difficulties. And I'm hesitant to go off track to what, other than what the intermunicipal development committee is already working on, I'd like to see what they get back from Alberta Health, and then be able to sit down and say with stakeholders, this is what Alberta Health is saying that they're looking at? Now where do we want to go with that? I'd like to find out from the province as much as possible what their thoughts are before we start trying to put political pressure to go a certain direction. That's...
That's your recommendation?
Yeah, that's...
I think, I suggest also, we go with the intermunicipal right now, and find out what's happening through them, because we're just doubling up. We're sort of kicking ourselves in the teeth.
Counselor Pivoy?
Trying to understand all of the ramifications here. I think we do need the input from, definitely from the physicians, so that we know where they're at, because I think we've been lacking a little bit there. It sounds like there may not be total unity on that front.
I'm sure there's not.
So what, yeah, I think, if, I don't know if we have any authority to do that, but ask them to, you know, to come up with something, and perhaps, perhaps have a representative there at the intermunicipal meeting to hear and perhaps present, or at least take back to, you know, the physician group, what, you know, what Alberta Health is saying, so that, yeah. I definitely agree that we all need to be on the same page, and it's just how do we, how can we accomplish that? And how is the best way to accomplish that?
Well, in the intermunicipal, the mayor suggested we invite the physicians or a representation from our clinic to that meeting, so that they are aware of what's, what Alberta Health.
You know, that's kind of what I just said there.
Yeah, if I may, are you implying that, you're saying it would be wonderful if they could come to some kind of unity before they make that presentation?
It would be nice, yeah.
And all I'm saying, I'm 100% with you. All I'm saying is, what I think needs to happen is somebody, I don't know who, somebody needs to facilitate that discussion.
What I'm saying is, is I think the intermunicipal committee is already working in that direction, and I don't want to bypass that committee.
Right.
That's my concern.
I personally would prefer to do it in a proper order, and to keep the physician informed, and to have them at the table sooner or later, talking, how, I'm not so sure. You suggested a committee from the town, that's maybe a little premature.
And I apologize, I'm using the wrong verbiage.
No.
I take it all back. I'm not talking about a committee here. I'm talking about facilitating a single, one-time strategic planning session of all stakeholders who possibly would want to attend. That's all I'm saying.
And I think that is going to have to happen.
Yeah.
So far, nobody, according to Deputy Reeve Curl, so far, nobody is facilitating that meeting. And he, his recommendation was...
But he wants the town to do it.
His recommendation was, the city, the town of Cardston, initiate that.
Okay.
We don't have to do it, I'm just saying.
You know, at this time, I would feel more comfortable if we go with our intermunicipal. Let's go, jump that hoop first. Let's see what's come out of there. If we really feel there is absolutely no intention for HHS to have the voice of the physician, which is contrary to what is written in the letter that I sent us back, because I made it very clear that we were very disappointed that no physician was at the table, and I promised us through that letter sent to the minister, as well as to the county and to Mayor and Reeve, that this will not happen again, and that next time around, they will indeed be there. So I want to hold them to what they tell me.
So let's just make a recommendation of one way or the other, and get it clear right now. Do we want to go through the intermunicipal planning committee?
I think that's the proper process for where it's at right now.
Are you prepared to make a recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation, that we allow the intermunicipal committee to have their meetings, see where that is going. If coming out of there, we don't feel that it's making the kinds of progress that we want to make, then maybe, then it's time to...
Then it's time to put some pressure on their whole system.
Is Deputy, is Deputy Reeve Curl involved in that intermunicipal?
Yes, as is myself.
Okay, then, has he been not attending that?
No, he's been there.
Okay.
I've been there as well.
All right. Sounds like some information is not being...
Our recommendation, our recommendation is that we have some kind of strategic planning session.
But you know, Counselor Pivoy, if you don't mind me saying, if something like that is discussed outside of the committees that are duly constituted, we're not helping each other. We need to have those discussions during those committees. And when we have an intermunicipal committee, that is the right time to bring that very concern to the table, and to have that committee discuss it, because you two cannot decide for the whole committee what can happen, right?
I don't think anybody was trying to decide for the whole committee.
Yeah, but I mean, I understand the desire to move that forward. I have the same desire.
So just so I'm clear, are you recommending that this council recommend to the intermunicipal council to organize a strategic planning session of stakeholders?
No, I believe that the intermunicipal committee come up with that recommendation if needed.
Continue on that road.
I believe that is a recommendation of that committee.
Sure.
That should empower then that group to work on the that committee.
If that group, names that I just said, invited me to participate in a discussion unrelated, should I go?
What's your, what's your feeling?
Well, I certainly don't speak for the council. It's merely an information session to find out what they want. And then hopefully, the desire would be to come back and report to council, hey, guess what? Turns out, they don't want a hospital in Cardston. Just so we're aware, we now have information, we can move forward.
Now, Counselor Pivoy, this is a meeting beyond the intermunicipal?
Well, obviously, if the town isn't hosting it, and they want to move forward with it...
Really? But you said you've been invited to another meeting?
No, 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 I'm just saying, if there's a meeting, and I get invited, as a person...
You're serving on the intermunicipal. You see, I don't, I don't understand what you want from this council.
Meaning, what I came here today to ask for?
Yes.
I came here today to ask the town to host a strategic planning session of any and all stakeholders that would be interested in helping discuss this issue of the court, so that they can all feel like they have their...
Counselor Pivoy, I think what you should do at the intermunicipal, May 7, I think you should bring that forward as a recommendation, and have that body give you that authority to carry on and pursue that very thing. And I think on the third, you have then a mandate that has weight.
Yeah, just so we're clear, I'm not recommending that I be at any part of this at all.
But you know something? If you are interested...
I just remember the conversation we had March 25th, and nobody wanted to touch this with a 10-foot pole, and I was delegated the task. This is the information that I put together before, you know, between then and now, in preparation for the May 13th meeting.
You know something?
This is the recommendation I came back with.
Yeah, except the recommendation is to be done at the intermunicipal.
I got it, I'll bring it up there, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that is a proper place, because they have the mandate to look into those common issues. And that's a common issue, because a hospital serves the county, the town, and also the reserve.
Well, it shows a consolidated concern of county residents and, and community residents.
It does not mean that we do not agree. It just means that there is a certain political structure in place that is best used to help the end that you're trying to achieve.
Absolutely.
And I think that's maybe my look at it. If you work with, within the political structure that is in place, it gives you authority, it gives you the chance to move, to make motions, et cetera.
I have no desire to work outside of that structure.
And to really...
And I apologize if I led anyone to believe that was my idea.
No, and you know something? You will intend, you will intend, and we totally appreciate your passion and your desire to move things forward. You do, I appreciate that. Sometime we can just roll on with that.
Absolutely.
Okay?
So just, to matter of order, I think we do this, the intermunicipal first, and then, and then move on to the next. So we have authority from that intermunicipal.
So are we clear on what we're doing?
I still have one question. Am I, am I to invite the physicians to the presentation by Dr. Walker?
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate. I would like them to be there.
So they get to hear where HHS' position is prior to going forward.
Because it'll be the presentation that I totally missed, the day that I say, why aren't the physician there? Okay.
Great, that's great.
Okay. Thank you for your passion. H is the Alzheimer Society. As you could see, we don't have a delegation, but their desire was to try to apply for the, I don't know exactly how you call it, initiative grant, opportunity grant, that is given by a town with a very specific purpose. The purpose is really to try to create something that in the future would bring more people to the town, create economic growth in a town. That really is the reason why that was used. If you remember, we had some of those initiative money used by Mr. Pillings regarding the Waterton, Carston Waterton, related to Glaciers, National Glaciers Park. And the reason was that it would bring back money to the town by people staying at hotels, eating at hotels, buying gas, and buying food, et cetera. So we saw that, and very rapidly, they became self-sustaining, and went on on their way. I do not see a nonprofit organization bringing quite the same thing. What I see, we should consider, is what we did last year. Last year, we did a donation in the amount of $306, which covered the rental of the Lions Park for four hours, and 18 tables at $12 apiece, and 100 chairs at $0.35 apiece. So all that, altogether, comes to $306. I think that is fair and appropriate. If we had every nonprofit organization that raised money in town asking us for that type of initiative fund, we would be broke. So what's your feeling? But that we help them with donation of park and money, absolutely, that we help them individually with giving them donation for good cause, that helps the town, absolutely. And I don't that in a best.
Yeah, I just, you know, looking at the qualifications for the initiative, you know, it either has to be A, a new event or activity, or B, they have to submit, you know, and include a detailed business plan. So, or actually, that's A and B, sorry, that's A and B. I think they're disqualified, based on what you just said, because of A.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's just not quite what the opportunities initiative was set up to fund.
No, but, so would you be prepared to put a motion forward to give them the use of the Lions Club and the table and chairs? Club and the table and chairs?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
To host the event?
Like we did last year.
So would you, would somebody prepared, somebody...
So, so Councilor Pivoy, you're gonna make that motion?
If, I don't doubt it.
Would you like to read that one?
Whereas this benefits our town. Yeah, no, the...
Well, this event can benefit the Alzheimer's patients in our town.
How many, do we know how many years this has been going on?
Last year was the first year.
Last year was the first year, okay. And is it, is it, sorry, I'm just trying to get the background here.
Well, they talked about a walk, but really, I did a walk last year with Reeve Curl, and honestly, it was a 10-minute walk. So it's very symbolic, it's a fundraiser.
It's a fundraiser, it's what it's about.
Yeah.
And it's limited, it sounds like, to about 100 participants.
Well, that's about what, they didn't have that last year, but this year, they're aiming for 100, they're aiming to increase that. But they raised a fair amount of money last year.
So I think so far, the Opportunities Initiative activities that we have approved have kind of been accessible to more substantial numbers, I think.
Yeah, definitely more, when we talk about the related, yes. Okay, Marion, would you like to...
I'm just wondering, because when, when you read the policy, I'm wondering if we should try to be more specific in the policy that it brings economic benefit, an event that would bring economic benefit to the community, you know, where a fundraiser for, you know, like the Terry Foxes running, and some of those that are specific fundraisers for societies that maybe don't fit the intent. So maybe we could improve the policy.
That's probably a good idea.
Okay, all right, so a recommendation could be for administration to revise the policy...
To propose an amendment?
Yeah.
Or to bring, I guess, a recommendation?
To include the economic benefit, benefit, to stress the need, demonstrate economic benefits to the town. All right, so that's part one. Part two, is somebody ready to make a motion to approve a donation as was given last year?
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so your motion would be?
To offer a, offer the same deal we gave them last year, however you want with that.
Okay, to make a donation to the Alzheimer's Society for a rental of the Lions Park, use of table and chairs in the amount not exceeding $306.
Well, I don't know, have our rates gone up?
No, we checked, checked.
But if they use a different number, maybe it would change.
Yeah, I hate to throw that in.
Okay, well, let's say, so $350.
Facility tables, chairs.
Okay, facility tables and chairs, and rental of the Lions.
Yep.
So you will not have a dollar amount, which is okay. Okay, so, all in favor? Thank you. And you can prefer this, whereas we see that as helping the town Alzheimer's.
The intent doesn't fit the Opportunities Initiative policy that was applied for.
Yeah.
We could put that into the...
Yeah, you can.
Is that a good motion?
Yeah.
That's a great motion.
I'll start drafting motions.
Thanks.
Whereas, whereas the intent, whereas the request of the Alzheimer's Society does not fit the initiative...
Opportunities Initiative.
Opportunity Initiative Fund policy, we as council recommend to a donation?
Not recommend.
We propose, we...
Approve, actually, approve.
Approve, there you go. We approve a donation. Do you have the rest? You okay with it?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, we'll give you time.
Just to be clear, are we including the amendment to the policy in this?
No, no, it'll be a separate item, this was a two item.
So, move by Councilor Pivoy, that whereas this event can benefit Alzheimer's patients in Cartson, whereas the application of the Alzheimer's Society does not fit the Opportunities Initiative policy, council...
We as council approve.
We as council approve a fee waiver for the rental of Lions Park, rental of tables and rental of chairs for the Alzheimer's Society's fundraiser.
On whichever day that is.
Very good, June 14th.
See, then it's clear when you, sorry.
Yeah, totally. All right, Marion, you are right.
It just makes it clear when you read.
Yeah, we've just demonstrated the reason why we want it this way. Thank you. Oh my goodness, we're moving slowly again. Okay, financial report, you have the financial report this month. Any question? We need someone to approve that.
I would like to move to approve the financial report as presented.
Okay, so approved by Councilor Barfus.
Move, move, Councilor...
Moved by Councilor Barfus to approve the financial report. Any questions?
As presented.
All in favor? All right, let's go to the committee and other reports.
Do you want to do a town council motion list first?
Yes, that's part of it.
I have a question about the financial report.
Okay, please go ahead.
I didn't understand why the, on the cash and temporary assets was bracketed.
Oh, bracketed, it means that we don't have the money quite there.
Are we in the hole?
No, no.
Yeah, we would, no, it would mean that we have an overdraft in the bank as of that date.
Oh, at that point, okay.
Yeah, it just means that then money will be moved from a short-term investment to that, or waiting to see if there is some, the taxes, money that will, prepaid taxes will come.
This time of year, it's quite common that we will have small overdrafts occasionally because we have a lot of requisitions that we have to pay prior to billing taxes. So we have a bit of a cash flow issue about this time of year. And the education tax requisition being one that we've already had to pay our first quarterly payment.
Yeah, and I just want to check that it's huge.
No, I just don't usually see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and because it is short-term investments, like you'll see our long-term investments, we're still at 1.998.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not really in a deficit, but our bank account shows us.
It's the short cash flow.
Cash flow.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very good point, Councilor Creed, and thanks for asking. Okay, all the committee reports. Okay, that...
There's one additional report, or actually, I saw there was two, three additional reports.
Yeah.
Councilor Barnes had prepared a report, me emailed it to me Thursday night.
Is he looking at the motion list?
Yeah, okay, let's go through the motion list. There's a few things there that maybe you would like to know. If you look at the third one, Jeff Shaw, Randy Wilson, April 14th, they met, and what the agreement was there, that the town will draft a lease agreement between the town and a school board. Now, go to the end of your list, three up, and you can see Jeff Shaw, letter to Westwind, renegotiating joint use agreement originally. Well, at this time, we are going to go ahead with a town lease, number one, and then, one that is drafted and approved, then we will bring that as a potential template for a regional lease system.
We've talked with the other communities, and they're just interested to see how this proceeds. They're not, you know, they don't want to negotiate regionally, and they'll look at what we've done.
Okay, so we're a little bit the forerunner with that one.
Again.
Besides that, yeah, right, besides that, I do not think there is anything that really jumped at my face that is problematic. Okay?
Can I ask one?
Please go ahead.
On the motion list is Graham and Marion, purchase of emergency communication somewhere.
Okay, all right, that's a good, that's a good thing. Marion is looking at the agreement as we speak and will report.
Yeah, as it says, the county has declined participating.
Right.
So we have the agreement that they've just sent on Thursday, Graham, I believe, gave it to me. And I have not had a chance to review it because I've got...
So that's a code red that we had approved, and Marion is going to look at that agreement and will report at the next opportunity.
Did they give any...
No, I won't report, I'll just go ahead with it because we have a motion.
Yeah, we already have a motion that we approved it, right?
Did they give any, the county give any reason why they backed out?
No. They discussed it at their council, they felt that it wasn't something they wanted to pursue at this time, so.
And it's quite okay. We also knew that by inviting them, it would not reduce the cost.
Right.
Well, it would have. They, they did say that it would reduce it.
Well, then I'm speaking out of...
But it wasn't, they chose already to, so that's kind of...
Okay.
The issue here where Councilor Baker was in, looking into CCANS and land use, do we know if that's coming to council soon?
No, I'm, I'm good with what, the discussion I had with Marion. Things are in, in progress, as we discussed, and I don't think there needs to be any more discussion until, you know...
We reviewed the land use dialogue.
Yeah, what's, what's been happening so far with our administration.
Okay, let's go through the reports. Agricultural Society, we don't have none.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's on.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry.
No, no problem. Nothing really substantial, although they did decide, and if we're gonna get a report later on Culture Days, they did decide to participate in Culture Days, send in layer of support, and host an event, and then actually, they're gonna put together a whole big cultural display. So it's, it's a big deal.
Thank you, Councilor. That is great, and thank you to both of you for working on that committee. I truly appreciate your desire to help with that initiative. And the grant has been submitted?
No, it has not. It's due, I think, the 28th is the deadline for the grant. I talked to Alexis this morning. They've had a little trouble coming up with a budget because one of the major components of the budget would have been a theater production put under the Kirchhaus Theater, and Alana has been out of town, who would be the person most qualified to...
Do that.
To come up with the budget, and so that's delayed him a little bit, but hopefully that we'll be on track for next time.
Okay.
We've had good, we've had good support from, from many groups, letters of rec, letters of support from, from many organizations.
Sorry, just go back, when you say for next time, you mean for the next time we meet?
The next time we meet, yes.
You didn't mean next year?
No, 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 we're still on track for this year, hopefully.
I just want to clarify.
And, you know, the library was very supportive, Donna's got all kinds of ideas of things.
Yeah, I could see that, yeah.
So we're, we're hoping that this is, this is a goal.
The Chamber of Commerce also came through with a letter of support for that activity.
Thank you very much.
So we determined the grant.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, so it appears that we're really on track here. Thank you so much for your hard work. Councilor Baker?
Question, Councilor Pivoy, it says the society would be possibly put into a deficit situation again this year?
Yes, the society has...
Is it a profound deficit?
Not profound, but they have, they have sufficient reserves. In fact, they could run this same deficit for probably six years in a row. But historically, just looking over the books for the last few years, that's the direction, unfortunately, that ex-societies in general, and ours specifically, is kind of headed.
The concern to me is, is they don't come back midship, mid-year and ask the town to bail out?
They, they won't need any bailouts, but, but they are worried about the sustainability, you know, long-term. They're trying to find activities that, you know, draw sufficient financial support. They have lots of support, but at this point, you know, the financial support is kind of waning, so it may limit them, you know, their future activities in years to come. They might have to cut way, way back on what they offer, which will be unfortunate if that's the case. So hopefully, again, the support. What, I'll be honest, probably where their weakest is in marketing. I don't know who the marketing team is, and so, you know, they need to just really be broadcasting this, not just locally, but all over the place. They need to be inviting people from far and wide to their activities, because they do have good activity.
I think they have the rights, Councilor, on board.
Now, do they have, excuse me, do they have a user fee in place?
They are implementing it.
Because that agro dome is going 24/7.
It is.
You know, and I'm just wondering, who's paying for the electrical bills and things like that, you know, when, when it's running up there?
Yeah, they're starting to implement more user fees.
Good.
So instead of having, for instance, a set fee to run an activity, I don't know what all their activities are called, even, I apologize, but an activity, they're now saying, well, look, you know, it's too, it's a two knee for everybody who goes and ropes full, you know, type thing. And so they're, they're changing it. So they actually make more money when, when it's attended well.
Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about is the individual use in the evenings, you know, they're going in there and using the arena for roping and riding and stuff like that on an individual basis, and they're coming from all over the county and so forth. And I think, myself, I perceive a, a user fee or a, or a membership fee or something like that stiff enough, it still doesn't create a burden, and yet it still gives them the opportunity to use the facility.
Right. That is definitely what they're pursuing, right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Well, I was just going to say, I remember some of the reports from, you know, from the previous council where they had a little issue, some of the troll issues of who had keys and who could access it, and has that, are those, have those issues been addressed?
For the most part, for the most part. Like with this user fee scenario, they're, they're kind of overcoming that, so that people that are there are paying to use the facility when the lights are on, the heat is on. That's actually their big expense, lights are cheap, the heat is fortunate.
Well, and, and redoing, regrooming the arenas and things like that, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough? All right, let's carry on. Audit, we had that, thank you. Chief Mountain Solid Waste, there is maybe one slight...
Thank you.
Slight error there. Councilor Barfus, when you talk about Altaling, they're building a transmission, they say they bought land from the county, land belongs to CMSWA. This is not quite correct because the commission, the authority, does not own land.
So the authority, the authority doesn't physically own the land, but they paid for it.
No, they don't.
They paid for it. So the county holds title to it, but the authority is the one that paid for it.
Right.
So they're looking to get money back from the county, from the county, and so that, they already paid for it.
Okay, so it's a little bit of a title versus who paid for what?
Yes, wording issue.
Okay, so it's a little bit of a confusing story. Thank you. And thank you so much for working on that best practice, and I understand, Marion, you had, according to your report, a first meeting, and it's moving in the right direction as a lot of people tasked with many different items. You're going to be busy. But I really looking forward to a very positive outcome. Thank you. Chinook House Regional Library, Councilor Barfus is not there, I had a question for him, I'll reserve it for some other time. The Chinook Foundation, you have reported right here. Can you tell me a little bit, they're going to do some upgrades to the villa, or what is it going to do?
Sorry, it's, it's the Diamond Willow facility. Right now, they have a lot of vacant tiny rooms, and yet they have, if you look there, you'll notice there's quite a few people on the waiting list to get in there.
Or couples.
And, you know, at first glance, I thought, well, why don't they just go in those empty rooms? Then I realized, no, 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 these rooms are very small. The, these people want to be in the bigger rooms. So, long story short, there's a special grant funding available, which we just found out we got approved for. So we can rip those rooms, you know, the walls down, make them into bigger, and they'll be much more popular. To get that funding, you have to be a smaller lodge, and by ripping those rooms out, we qualify for that. So we, we did.
Our population needs this. Our population increases, but our, our rooms increase, and so it makes it a lot more viable.
And the, and the funding, the revenue we're able to get from the larger rooms make up for it. So it's, you know, kind of a net gain.
Yep.
And then, you know, we're, we're kinda hoping for some other exciting news in the future, and we'll let you know as we learn more.
Thank you. Okay, we have the college, community future, community in bloom. I see that you have the date for the cleanup. Did you decide when that was going to be?
It's the first Saturday in May, unless the weather is bad, which, which is the way, what they've scheduled all along, so.
Okay, the first Saturday in May, so you will give us a little bit more of an update next time around?
We'll be having, we'll be having our communities in bloom meeting this Thursday to kinda finalize notifications and invitations for people to participate.
Is the town going to
Yeah, the town.
Be supporting this with trucks and whatever?
Well.
Have you gone to the town to ask? Because if you need support, you're going to have to deal with administration somewhere down the line.
Randy's volunteer garbage bags, but also Rick Williams is also volunteer garbage bags, but.
But essentially, it's a truck you need. So if you need manpower and if you need truck, if you don't ask the town, ask support, it won't happen.
So I don't know if we've got that yet.
I don't know what your schedule is. We plan to have staff for Moses Lake cleanup that weekend?
It's, it's really more of a highway cleanup.
Well, yeah, but.
So, and I don't know what, what the stakes have arranged with the town. We'll, we'll be, we'll be discussing it. I imagine Randy will be there Thursday at our communities in bloom meeting.
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think he's other towns.
Is he? Okay.
Is Volker Steven helping with the highway or?
They don't help, they don't help in this small portion out by Moses Lake. They usually do beyond that.
Yeah.
The, the, they have, actually have a contract with Volker Steven for the highway cleanups.
It's under the 4H clause.
Okay, then we need to kinda find out those kind of item because
I just need to know what the expectation is so we can arrange stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe you want to make sure that, that your committee, you can liaise with the town.
Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we.
All right, just email me.
Yeah.
You would, because I'm out of town for a couple of days.
Okay.
All right. FCSS, there is something there that was written by Alexis in a recommendation making, making seniors aware of the older senior benefits that are available. Having someone who could assist seniors to fill out application forms and.
That was submitted by Councilor Creed, not by.
Oh, by Councilor Creed, oh, sorry, sorry. And I really think, in talking with Marion, Marion was saying, you know, there, there is maybe a retired accountant in town that deals with the seniors' societies. There should maybe, is Mark Wood, there should maybe be approached to try to see if he could take that project down.
I can bring that up with the next FCSS.
I just suggested to Alexis that, that that's maybe a way that we could fund some programming money to the seniors' association, because we've had to take away that utility
Yeah.
funding, so it's something that they just might want to consider.
Yeah, we, we tried to discuss which, what groups, who, who could actually do that. And we talked about like caregivers or, or association, but Mark Wood would be an excellent suggestion, so we can bring that up and.
So maybe you want to bring that back to your next meeting?
I would, I'll do that.
Councilor Banger, you want to ask?
In your report on FCSS, I'm very much concerned about that decision for the volunteer appreciation dinner.
Oh, okay.
What I'm concerned about is every year, it's, it's held in the, in the civic center, and it's wonderfully attended. And in fact, we have more, you know, that could come.
Yeah, well, that's.
But we can't, we cannot include them
Yeah.
because of the size of, of the hall.
Right.
I'm wondering, do the, does the county commit to this volunteer appreciation banquet in any way, form?
The volunteer appreciation banquet has been basically, it's an internal program of the FCSS, that the FCSS hosts that volunteer appreciation.
Could we host two volunteer appreciation nights?
That's very.
One for county residents and one for town residents?
Well, the, the idea of having this is, is a more of an open, you know, barbecue-type event or, or the idea was to actually be able to include many more people to come to this. We would still probably want people to RSP for it, so that we kinda have an idea of how many people were coming. But we wanted to open up the venue so that it was perhaps even an outdoor or use the reunion center. You know, we didn't, we didn't discuss, you know, all the details. We just, we just kinda the concept of getting a lot more people.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned, Councilor Creed, that if you did that, you're gonna lose the, how, how should I call it? Just the, the, the aura of, of let volunteers all be together and being able to communicate with each other, listen to the, to the speaker, and just having a night, which is really a nice night. And you can't really do that in a barbecue or a corn bust. And that's proven with the churches when they have their fall corn bust, you know, it's just a, I don't know, it's just up there.
The, the reason I think I wanted to move it is because lately, every time it has happened, the weather has been horrid. And the summer has more chance to be.
Well, I can, I can see moving it, Marion.
Well, also.
You know, the timeframe, but I would still like to see.
You wanted to be a, a setting, Marion?
The, the most opportune time to have it would be during volunteer appreciation week, which is in April.
Right, and we discussed that, but
It was a little short this year to make that happen. I think that's why they talked about
Moving back.
The August or September date, yeah.
And that.
Okay.
That way we can kinda keep moving it slowly back till we get actually back to the appreciation week.
Get enough time to plan.
All right, so any recommendation for Councilor Creed?
No, it's, it's just my concern.
I, I will share that with the, with, with the committee and, you know, maybe, maybe this is an experiment this year, and then we will, we can evaluate that. So, but yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, we need to move forward a little bit because of the time, and there is no supper, so you're going to go hungry.
I didn't expect to be.
No, and we will, we will learn to move forward. The Historical Society has a report. I'm just going to tell you what my concern is. Councilor Edmonds is not there. They approve a budget, but we do not know the source of the revenues. So that'll be a question for Councilor Edmonds next time around. Inter municipal development.
Just to back up just a bit, we missed fire.
Where is the fire?
Sorry, in the alphabet order.
Oh, it's on paper.
Emergency services.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just had a question, maybe better directed to Councilor Banger, who was in attendance. Are they resolving?
Yes, they are.
Wonderful, and I'm good.
Yes, things are happening.
That's great news. That's great news.
They're, they're slow to come, but yes, they are.
Okay, in other words, we had a human resource issue that needed to be dealt with and that's being looked after.
Specifically, it's addressed here in number, paragraph four, Fire Chief Danny Melvin's report about the AHS and the fire conflict.
Well, we, we, we had some conflict from, from outside sources, sort of stoking the fire a little bit, going to a public meeting where the, where the volunteer firefighters are invited to attend, and posting the minutes after they've been approved in the building so they can see what's happening. I think things are, are starting to come around.
Transparency.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. By the way, the firefighters were really busy in town this past week. As you know, there was a fire up on Is Hill, and they done a fabulous job and responded very quickly. And I was very glad to see them move as fast. I started to feel, I started to feel a lot too close for comfort. Okay. Historical Society, inter municipal, level irrigation, no meaning, library, there's a, a long comment there. And I see there is a partnering. I mean, the partnering with the town, I didn't know if it meant we needed some money attached to that or not. Councilor Bond is not there to tell me.
So is that part of your Culture Days recommendation?
Yes, it is.
The committee.
The, the library actually had submitted a, a budget to the Culture Day, so that, that part has been given to them.
Okay, so that's part of your grant application, I gather. Okay, Marion, thank you, Councilor Bond, for your extensive report. Did a good job. I thought mine were short, but yours is long.
Only one time.
Okay, the ORS report, as you can see, they're going to hold a FOIP workshop in Fall for the new counselors who'd never had the chance to have a FOIP workshop. It's a good thing to take. Parks and Recs, I don't have
Mayor.
A meeting.
On the ORS committee, I noticed that they're looking at the policy on their vacation and bank time, and that is a very good thing.
Yeah, yeah, we were discussing that, and it was important. And as you know, Per Newfeld, who helped us with our municipal development.
He's our planner.
Planner, who is our?
He is our planner.
Who is our planner is, has resigned and is moving to better and grander things. And so from his perspective, it's a good move. From our perspective, maybe not so good. Okay. Let's move on. Parks and Recs, who is on Parks and Recs?
Barnes.
Okay.
They only meet, I believe.
Every quarterly, so I don't think there was a new report. Okay, the power, as submitted, the power, the power, as you see, is in trouble this year. The reason it's in trouble is not because the committee has not worked, not because we didn't have the money.
Just.
It's because there was one item that was overlooked, which was to have a position from an elected official from the Moses Lake committee, community. And at this point, they refused to join the town. So in the best interest of peace, for which a power was intended, the recommendation was to cancel the power for 2014. So we have a letter that we would like to send, but we need to talk to the council member that is sitting at our committee, who was not there at that point. And the recommendation is to seek new venues to continue improving relationships, but that might take a different twist. And I will have to keep you posted.
Mayor, not to delve too deeply, and I know it's a sensitive topic perhaps, but is there any more information you can give as to, you know, maybe ways we could avoid that in the future, or like what specifically?
Okay, I, I'm, okay, if I can just put it simply, we working very, very well with other members that have been volunteers from the town and from Moses Lake. The volunteers that we have from Moses Lake are not the choice, were not chosen by the
Committee.
Committee in Moses Lake. And therefore, if there was a change of regard or an addition, they, they requested that we change all our Moses Lake volunteers. And we felt it was an inappropriate request. And therefore, we decided, carry on. A power is designed to have peace and to celebrate peace and good relations and not discord and dissension.
We, we may find out at a later date how Chief and Counsel is going to address that issue. You know, I think it would be left up to the Chief and Counsel to address that issue.
So what I need to know from Council is if you approve sending the letter that was written and in your pocket.
Ninety.
Yes, to try to advise Chief and Counsel of the decision we had to make, since they have a financial take in that, in that event. They gave us $5,000, too much, all $5,000. So we want to know what they want us to do with it, if they want us to keep towards new initiatives or return that money.
The headdress ceremony, is that from, I mean, I know it's a passing. Is it a passing from their Chief and Counsel?
No. No, so let me help you understand a little bit. We talked to Dexter.
Christine?
Brucehead. Who came to our council and explained to us how that whole headdress came into his hand. It came because it was confiscated at the border when the granddaughter of Charles O tried to come across with it. And at that point, it was a granddaughter and a great granddaughter. And at that point, the border patrol called a counselor and happened to be Counselor Brucehead who came. And who took, who took with himself his brother, who is an elder, to make sure that the transfer was done properly and according to protocol. That headdress came into his hand, and then it was determined because it was a gift that was intended to come back to the town. He was just the person that was a vehicle to retransfer it, to give it back to us. It's not a transfer, it's, it's a gift back.
So, and all we would need then is just Counselor Brucehead to be?
Yes, and to have a ceremony, which
Present the gift.
We, we are looking at, and we need to talk with them, and maybe part of the Heritage Day could be something like that with inviting local dancers to perform something, and he would come in his rebellion, whatever.
I would personally love to see that as part of Culture Days, but I think.
And I think that is something that we, but we will need to know fairly rapidly because the granddaughter and great granddaughter granddaughter is 97 years old.
Yeah, 97.
And, and a great granddaughter, you know, with accompanying her, and they would come to town. So we need to know what's going to happen if there's a change of date. Okay?
Is, and I don't wanna rush that initiative, but is there any way to know before the Culture Days grant application goes in? Or because?
When is your grant application?
If they were able to come to that, what you're saying?
If we were able to move that passing of the headdress to Culture Days
To Culture Days.
And could put it in our grant, that would pretty much almost guarantee that we have.
You won't know that by next Tuesday, I don't think.
Well, if, if, if the only person who needs to okay it is Counselor Brucehead, I'm just wondering if maybe we don't.
Okay, you know what?
If it's worth making that.
I, I could, I could contact him if you ask me with that, I will do it.
But the other question would be whether, whether this daughter and granddaughter
Could come on that day.
Would be able to come on that day.
Right.
But we have the address in town. That's our.
We need a motion to send that letter.
Yeah, we, we need to decide if you want that letter sent or not.
As a committee member, I will make that motion that we send that letter to Chief and Counsel, asking them what we do with the $5,000.
Okay, do you want to send the letter the way it is?
If, if I may, along those lines, if included in that letter could be a proposal, that if we are able to arrange the date of this headdress passing, that that $5,000 could go to pay entertainers.
Councilor Poy, I think, I think that's a little separate from the issue. I mean, that, the passing of the headdress is, is not related to the power.
No, 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 I understand. I, I understand, so I guess.
Why, why, why don't we just approve the sending of the letter? Why don't we just approve the sending of the letter, and then upon receiving that letter, then discuss the different possibility? Would that work?
Well, I guess what I'm recommending is we're giving them an option to have an alternate powwow activity.
I think that's what the letter does in a sense, to ask if they.
Yeah, we're asking them what they would like us to do with the $5,000.
If there's some other.
Retain it for a similar event or send it back. Right, but I don't know if they're aware of the Culture Days option, so I'm just simply recommending we suggest it as one of the options.
You know, what I will do, as part of my conversation with councillor Brucehead, I will discuss that issue.
Sure.
See, Chief and Council does not need to be aware of the passing of that headdress.
No, it's nothing to do with them.
Yeah, and it was just given to councillor Brucehead, he's like, like the mayor said, he is the avenue, because it was an artifact that was seized at the border, and it's a native artifact, and he's just receiving it on behalf of, actually, the town, if you think about it. And so he's just going to give it back to the town in a presentation.
So the way the presentation would be made if we have those granddaughter and great granddaughter come, it would be from them to councillor Brucehead to me?
Yeah.
That's the way it would happen?
Right, and I apologize, it's definitely two separate issues. The passing of that versus the suggestion that if they want, we can have that $5,000 go toward paying First Nations performers for the cultural arts on Culture Days.
I could mention that to them.
Yeah.
All right.
If that's something they would be in favor of, I think that would be a good harmonious way to have those dancers come and dance, anyone who wants to come down.
So do you want the motion to include that? No, I would say no.
I would say leave the motion open as a recommendation. Let's deal with the letter.
Yeah, and that's what my motion was. And then, once we get the result of that letter, then we'll discuss.
How we will move forward.
How we'll move forward.
Yeah. Would that work? Okay, Pauline Baker. So the motion is to send the letter to town, Chief and Council, after having talked with Dexter Brucehead, councillor Brucehead, okay? I think that needs to be done before we send it that way. All right, interagencies for your information. The MLA market review, it's a complex piece of information, but it's really is for your information. It just tells you that they are, they made note of the pros and cons that we could see in the different versions for the rates. And so that's a reply.
This, yeah, this is just, if I might, this is the final draft that will be presented, and it does appear that they listened to some of our comments with concern about the effect on small municipalities that own their own power system, but that's not to say that the recommendation that's accepted will take them into account.
And that's our whole point, we do not know the outcome yet.
Councillor Benjamin.
I hate to ask this, but Marion, we haven't seen a review, report yet, a market analysis review of the.
The market surveillance report?
Yes.
It'll be at the next council meeting. I just got the final SLA report the other day.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the letter that was sent for Mr Mark McGilroy regarding the RRO, which could go up. Could go up.
Could go up.
And.
It will do. You're no cook about it.
So this one is a regulated rate option, that's what it means, and it really affects those people who do not have an energy provider. In other words, by default, the increase of about 10 cents to their rate, which is.
Not an increase of 10 cents, Mary.
Oh, sorry.
10 cents per kilowatt.
Oh, 10 cents per kilowatt.
And that's just projections, but it's just a heads up that there could be a significant impact. Last one was 6.8.
6.81.
So what is the actual increase to the customer?
We don't know at this point.
Per kilowatt, I mean.
Is per kilowatt depend on your consumption, right?
Right now, 6.8.
Is recommendation from administration that we maybe do a public notification of this?
The difficulty is not knowing.
We do not know who is affected.
There's been some discussion in the media about it, that with energy, with gas prices, natural gas prices up, but without us knowing what that rate is.
The only thing you could do is put something in the paper that says, if you don't have an energy provider, you may want to start to look into one, not to have horrible surprises coming your way.
Marion, how many citizens do we have in Carson?
But if I might.
But it might be to the advantage.
I think that's a risky statement.
Exactly right, it could be to the advantage, too.
That's right, it might be a one-month spike, which we do not know overall, may not necessarily be a bad thing, so I would be hesitant to.
That's right.
Can you tell us roughly how many homes we have that are not rated? We don't know.
I don't know.
Okay.
All right, the next large document is the AUMA review of the 2014 budget. If you had a chance to read it, you will see that their concern is that although the government is telling us that they're giving us more money for the municipal sustainability initiative, that in fact, they are not reaching the level that we previously intended to be reached. So, which means that the municipalities will never receive as much money as they were promised, which means that we will continue to seek cost recovery on our utilities in order to be less dependent on a government. And we can see the effect on our budget of a wise decision made previously. So any other comments regarding this report?
I would just add that it appears that the AUMA has bought into the whole idea of changing terminology of budgets as well.
Right, I was gonna say, it's a conservative budget overview, not a wow bros.
Well, it is, okay, read it with your political bias and read into it as you wish, right? It is still, it still has some interesting points.
No question, it's just kind of like when somebody uses the turmoil sand versus tar sand, you know which side of the equation they're, that article is.
You are very perceptive, councillor, thank you.
They try to be politically correct.
Okay, now we have a fairly comprehensive CEO report, and appreciate Marion offering that every month. It helps us to understand where we're going. The Parks and Rec, Marion, maybe my only concern is regarding the grant, has a grant application been sent for this slide?
Oh, yeah, we sent quite some time ago, but we haven't had confirmation yet whether that's been approved or not.
Okay, so, and we know that that grant has to be a matching grant, therefore, the swing club is.
125,000.
The swing club is actively involved.
Yep, raising money. To date, we've got about 30,000, but there's some additional prospects out there that they're working on.
Okay.
And there's definitely a June 1 opening, eh?
Well, we're still looking for that first week of June. I would suggest that realistically, because of weather-related issues, it might be, don't hold your breath, starting June 1, but I would suggest that by the middle of June, there's no question. The contractors are still right on schedule, so nothing's been delayed.
I see them down there working quite diligently. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we need a motion to extend?
Yeah, we need a motion to extend, and don't extend for any more than 10 minutes, please.
I'll, we'll extend for 15 minutes.
We can always quit early.
We can always quit early, you don't have to go to 15 minutes.
Thank you, okay, 15 minutes, all in favor? Okay, let's move on. There's a lot of stuff to be covered today.
Just one quick question, the monthly foot patrol report, are those coming back positive?
Well, that's something I do not know.
It's just starting.
Yeah, Horton's now on staff as well, so that seems to be helping. It's a battle, if I might say, you know, we hope it's making some inroads, but I'm not sure that it's, it may be moving them off to different locations, which is a concern. But we keep.
I'm hearing great things, so I just didn't know, like, from the administration point of view.
Yeah, you know, Horton has been tasked with some additional responsibilities this year. I'm hoping to be able to maybe deal more with the road issue than just simply moving people along.
Right, lovely.
And that is another issue, the $5,000 from the Chief and Council might be used towards new initiatives. That's what we would like to look at.
Marion, I really like this $285,000 increase in the first quarter in housing starts, probably one or two houses, but that is a positive.
That the house down in Scoville that's going in?
Yes.
That would be one of the applications, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have those people in front of the, you know, the details of that in front of me.
Can you give us an idea of what the other permits involve?
I can, things like a garage or some.
Additions or renovations or whatever.
Is that what it is? A daddy permit request?
It wouldn't be a new house, it would be just a renovation or something.
Yeah, okay. Marion, for the capital project schedule, I see the oil link that's going to be done. Can you tell me, and I can't remember, what was decided at the intermunicipal committee? Were we going to be looking after the road going to the transfer or?
No, we were directed, Murray and I were directed to work with our public works people and come to a solution.
Okay, so we don't have.
My understanding at this point, and you're making me draw from my memory from a couple of weeks ago, is on the transfer station road.
We're going to grade it.
Either we're gonna grade it and they're gonna supply the gravel, or the other way around, and we were also going to provide some of the dust control product there.
Right.
We were just trying to decide which was cheaper for us. The decision had been made which was which of that.
Yeah, I know that we discussed that, but I.
Cemetery route. But we haven't come to any conclusion yet.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so you have other reports, Alberta Health Service, okay, so those are all the reports that we have. Now, let's go into the correspondence. So you have a letter back to us from Alberta Health Services. My only concern was the statement that says the physicians were invited, but were unable to have a representative attend, talking with Mr Johnson. He confirmed that they never had been invited, so that a little bit irked me, but anyway.
And they didn't, they didn't, I understand, meet with the physicians.
They met with one physician.
Pardon, was that all?
With, yeah.
I know I talked to Dr.
One or two. One or two physicians, but not more than that. Okay, the Alberta Historical Resource Foundation Heritage Awards, if you know of somebody in the community that has done.
Mayor, what about our community in accepting that gift of the headdress? That's a historical preservation.
That's an interesting one, but you have to have, that happened in the past three years.
To check and manage their historic places.
But it says, if I remember right, it says that you have to have a project that happened within the past three years. Where did I read that? Can you find it?
Okay, the Heritage Conservation Award, yes, projects completed within the last three years are eligible.
Yes, that's it.
Heritage Awareness Award for research, publication, or public engagement projects that depend on understanding love or the heritage of common great awareness.
Okay, now here, you might be, may be correct.
Yeah.
It says nomination for 2014 must be received by the Alberta Historical Resource Foundation by July 15, 2014, so maybe we can apply under that, I don't know.
Can we give direction to our administration?
I would suggest that maybe you keep good records of that happening and put the application in for 2015.
Right.
I think you're a little premature to apply for something that hasn't taken.
Well, that's what my impression is.
Also, is this directed at municipalities, or is this something better referred to the Historical Society?
No, well, I would imagine they would have got the same information. Yeah, I think so, because as I say, eligible nominees, individuals, organization, corporation, a town is a corporation, congregations, institutions, municipalities, First Nations and metis settlement, and others deemed eligible by the foundation board of directors. So under the corporation, we qualify.
Well, I'm just thinking, it might be appropriate if we nominate the Historical Society for some awesome initiative they've taken over the last three years, has there been?
And that would be.
Well, I'm wondering, I don't know if they.
I think we should put it on record that we need to keep that in the back of our, you know.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
They could use that.
Okay.
Sorry, I need some clear direction here.
I do think that what we need to do, I agree with Marion, let's, since we do not know what's going to happen exactly regarding that transfer, we will, if it happens, keep notes, keep pictures of the event, record the event, and present it as a potential element for a Heritage Award in 2015.
I'm just looking at that first one, that conservation or interpretation of paleontology and archaeological resource, I'm trying to think, when, how long has it been since, you know, Shane Tolman has done that work, you know, at all these beaches, that been in the past?
Three years or five or something?
More than three years ago that he's done over there.
2005 or 2002 or something like that.
Or if he's done any more recent work.
Well, he just completed his, just completed his artwork here this year.
Yeah.
Is the intent with this that we look for projects for the Historical Society, or are we?
I'm specifically curious, I think that the intent here of all of this is things that have happened in the past three years. So maybe less focus on what we're doing this year, which, like you say, is more appropriate for next year's applications. But if there has been anything in the last three years of significance, if we could get it recognized, that would be worthwhile.
Do we ask councillor Edmonds?
I would say that it would be the person that should do with it.
Including the one for municipal heritage preservation, which would be recognizing our town, if in the last three years, you can think of something we as a town have done to conserve our heritage.
Okay, how would you do on that, Marion? Enough of our recommendation? Okay, all right, then you have some letter coming from the Legislative Assembly to Kevin Phillips. Phillips regarding his concerns regarding the electrical and the...
That was in response, both of those letters are in response to our...
To our letter, yeah.
On the Retail Market Review Committee.
Yeah, the AMs committee.
Okay, so the following letter addressed to me is addressing from Minister, my Queen, Minister of Energy, is to acknowledge the fact that we showed some concerns. The next letter, as it came from Alberta Municipal Affairs, telling us that we indeed will see some increase in the municipal sustainability initiative operating funding, which for this year is good news, but we know that good news won't last. In fact, the good news will die in 2016. There are two letters from family and community support services to let the government know that to approve a budget with absolutely no increase when population increases doesn't seem to quite make sense.
Very good letters.
And so they are there for your information. There is a letter from the Stori Children's Hospital Foundation requesting donations or support. I believe that the best way to do that is on an individual basis. There is a letter from Community Foundation of Lesbridge, now here, that one is an important one. It recognizes a gift of 7,500 for the Kelston Swimming Pool Project. There is a ceremony that will happen, Marion, please help me.
May 9th.
Friday night at 10:45, I believe.
May 9th in Lesbridge. I will go to that presentation.
Well, also...
And somebody from the community should come.
Yeah, I think we'll invite, or if we haven't already invited Paula Brown, who's been instrumental in this.
Yeah, Paula is working so far.
Well, Jason, Jason Coleman is also on that, on that board, he should be there.
He is, what is it, your director, he will be there. And yes, that's what it is, a grand celebration is at Westminster Elementary School, you all welcome to attend, but I will represent the town. And the next item comes from the Kelston Clinic and they give us a position on proedition, saying that I do in fact support proedition as it protects from dental caries, cavities. Okay? Any other questions that you may have? We are right on the button, is what I have to move to agenda, thank you. Thank you very much, it's been a long meeting, but productive.